And a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of September 14th, 2021 is called to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of agenda and order of priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda? President Albridge.
I move that discussion on State Board of Education board norms be added following item C as the last agenda item of the morning.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Support.
Support from Dr. Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes. Lipton?
On the amendment?
The amendment to the agenda, yes.
You just all in favor say aye.
I think we do this because of virtual.
I have a technology update here. Apparently, the people cannot hear the room.
Oh, well.
Patty, can you hear us?
Let me see if I can go back. What if I am mute then?
Oh, yeah. It says up at the top that it's muted. Right. Right there. Yep.
Can you hear us in the room now? Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay. This is the vote on the amendment to add board norms to the agenda for discussion. Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett? Yes. Pew?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly? Tilly is muted.
She says yes.
She says yes. Okay. And Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous.
Very good. That was a motion on the amendment to the agenda. Any other proposed amendments to the agenda? Yuri, I'm sorry. Dr. Pew?
I brought this up with you, Dr. Rice, and maybe this can go into the legislative discussion or be sprinkled elsewhere. But I do want to talk about the executive orders and the rules that President Biden put forth on the ninth last Thursday and revisit discussion around COVID testing and in schools, COVID vaccination and mask wearing. But perhaps it can go into legislative agenda?
It would be an appropriate place. That would be fine. Terrific. Any other proposed amendments? Hearing none. Marilyn, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Strayhorn?
Yes.
Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous.
At this time, Marilyn Schneider, our State Board Executive, whom you've just heard, will introduce the members to the State Board of Education.
Happy to do so. You've just been listening to Dr. Rice. He's the state superintendent and chairperson of the board. And as we go around the table, to his left is Dr. Cassandra Albridge, president of the board from Dearborn. Next to her, Dr. Pamela Pew, vice president from Saginaw. And joining us virtually today from Southfield is Ms. Tiffany Tilly. She's secretary of the board. Virtual participation is allowed for reason of medical condition under the Open Meetings Act. And this is what Ms. Tilly is invoking. The next person at the table physically here is Ms. Nikki Snyder. She's on the State Board Legislative Committee, and she's from Dexter. And then the next spot at the table is also today virtual participation from Ms. Ellen Cogan-Lipton, chair of the SBE Legislative Committee. She's from Huntington Woods. She is invoking the medical reason for virtual participation as allowed by the Open Meetings Act. And in person in the room is Ms. Leah Porter. If you were listening last month, you met her. She's the 2021-22 Michigan Teacher of the Year. When she's not with us, she's teaching third grade at Wilcox Elementary School and Hope Public Schools. Going across the table, ex-official board member, the governor's spot, representing the governor, Ms. Patty Redinger. She's the governor's director of federal affairs and acting policy director. Back in the room, Judy Pritchett, Dr. Judith Pritchett. She's the board's NASB delegate. That's the National Association of State Boards of Education. She is also an SBE Legislative Committee member, and she resides in Washington Township. Next to her in the room, Mr. Jason Strayhorn. He's a member of the board's Legislative Committee, and he resides in Novi. Next to me, Mr. Tom McMillan, treasurer of the board from Oakland Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Introductions, even in a pandemic, have been altered. I would like to introduce, and give me great pleasure to introduce, our new chief deputy superintendent, Dr. Susie Carnell, to my left. She's formerly chief of staff to the state superintendent. I'd also like to recognize Ms. Renee Garcia to my right. She is the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, formerly superintendent of Muskegon Heights School District. So I welcome them in their new capacities, and they're already making significant contributions to our work. With respect to public participation, the public may provide comments during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 1:00 p.m. Public comments will be accepted from those in person and online who register before 1:00 p.m. today. If you wish to offer public comment online during the meeting, send an email to schneiderm@michigan.gov. Provide your name, city, and telephone number for which you will be calling. You will receive an email with the call-in number and conference ID. To provide public comment in person, please complete a public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. These instructions are also listed on the MDE webpage at www.michigan.gov/MDE. First item on the committee, the whole agenda today, board, is educational updates related to COVID-19. This is a relatively enduring portion of our agenda during the pandemic. In Michigan, since our last state board meeting, the number of COVID-19 cases has risen in Michigan from 913,220 to 976,505, an increase of approximately 6.9% in the last five weeks, with the number of deaths increasing from 19,958 to 20,535, a rise of 2.9%. After flattened case numbers in June and July, our numbers in those across the country began to rise in August and September, a function of the Delta variant and pockets of unvaccinated individuals in communities across the state and country. Our vaccination rates continue to climb slowly but steadily. 66.4% of Michigan residents ages 16 and above have received at least an initial vaccination, an increase of approximately 2.5 percentage points since our last board meeting. Two-thirds of the state's residents ages 16 and above have received a vaccination, and more than half have received full dosage. In total, more than 9.7 million doses of vaccine have been administered to Michigan residents. Worldwide, 5.7 billion vaccine doses have been administered, including just shy of 1 billion, 947 million, in just the last 28 days. Those protected by vaccinations are far less likely to get infected, let alone experience substantial sickness, vaccination, hospitalization, and death. Sickness, hospitalization, and death. Research does indicate that fully vaccinated individuals not only can experience breakthrough cases, albeit in very low percentages, but can transmit the virus. That said, unvaccinated individuals are far more likely to be vulnerable than our vaccinated individuals for sickness, hospitalization, and death. According to the Johns Hopkins Coronavirus Resource Center, worldwide, there have been 225 million COVID cases and more than 4.6 million deaths associated with COVID-19 as of last night. Nationally, there have been 41.2 million cases and more than 661,000 deaths. With 18.3% of the world's cases and 14.3% of the world's deaths associated with COVID, the U.S. continues to lead the world in both categories. In our layering of mitigation strategies recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, vaccination is clearly of paramount importance. The growing number of Michiganders who are getting vaccinated are protecting not simply themselves, but others as well. You're helping to reduce sickness, hospitalizations, and death, and to increase the number of days and hours our children and staff, including Ms. Porter, are in person in school. By definition, the layering of mitigation strategies requires masks, social distancing, proper hygiene, and at times, testing and quarantining as well. Given the increase in COVID-19 cases, the following local health departments have mandated masks for at least the elementary school-aged children in their counties. Allegan, Benzi-Lilinow, Berrien, Genesee, Ingham, Kalamazoo, Kent, Ottawa, Oakland, Washtenaw, Wayne, and the Health Department of Northwest Michigan, which includes Antrim, Charlevoix, Emmett, and Adzigo Counties. Additionally, the following school districts not covered by a local health department mandate have imposed their own mask mandates. Detroit Public Schools Community District, Traverse City, Grand Ledge, Saginaw, Battle Creek, Muskegon, Mount Pleasant, Bangor, East Point, Van Dyke, Eaton Rapids, Manistee Area, Mount Clemens, Munising, and Norway Vulcan. All told, more than 700,000 students are covered by a mask mandate, including children in most of the largest counties but for Macomb in the state. In communities with rising COVID numbers, masks are a necessary part of our mitigation strategy. In spite of these obvious challenges, board, I am optimistic about this year. We're going to have more children learning and more teachers teaching in more schools for more hours of more days than last year. We have a rising consciousness in the state about the importance of preschool, the need to address student and staff mental health challenges, and the need to address teacher shortages. Deniers are down in all three areas, all state strategic education plan goals. Consciousness and funds to address these issues, along with literacy and math improvement, social and emotional learning, and physical changes to buildings to address health issues, are all up. At today's meeting, among other things, the board will hear an update on accountability, both federal and state, and assessments, both state summative and local benchmark. The board will hear our annual educator data update. Board will discuss draft board norms. Board will hear a presentation and vote on Michigan out-of-school time standards of quality. Board will hear a presentation and vote on Camp Tasmajida's spending plan. The board will hear a brief legislative update and vote on the NASB delegate bylaw amendments and policy agenda. It's a significant agenda, board, and an important agenda at an important time. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this moment.
Yeah, I do.
Mr. McMillan?
I just wanted to know if you will acknowledge that the CDC clearly says on their website that teens and those younger than teens are at more risk from the flu for their health than COVID. Caldoon refused to acknowledge the simple science. I was just wondering if you will acknowledge that.
What I acknowledge is that Dr. Caldoon is a medical doctor.
No, just yes or no. That's all I'm looking for. Will you or not?
I'm a public educator, not a public health expert. Other questions?
So you won't acknowledge what the CDC says on their website?
Other questions?
My goodness.
Ms. Snyder?
Deny the science.
Statement. And my statement is that the many of the things that you just said are rooted in opinion, and there's a lot of contrary science and contrary opinions. And we hear you. We respect it, and we'll move forward in that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Big Pharma likes what he said, though.
Other board members' questions or comments?
Dr. Rice, I don't think, I don't know if you gave numbers on outbreaks, because I was just reading some numbers that are pretty dire. And I'm wondering if you have those numbers. And it would be interesting to, if you have those numbers, if we're able to get like a breakdown of what type of mitigation measures are within those schools where we're seeing the outbreaks. The other things that I'm, and I guess I'll let you answer that. I mean, I know some of this data. It's hard to get. It's moving fast.
Sure. So to the question of outbreaks, the state tracks outbreaks by location. And so we are able to get you, Dr. Pew, a number of the outbreaks in the last week associated with pre-K-12 schools, and we'll have that number prior to the end of this meeting. You should know also, and I believe you do, I believe the whole board does, I'm in weekly calls on COVID-19 cases, hospitalization, deaths, vaccinations, and other mitigation strategies with the governor, with the lieutenant governor, with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and with other cabinet members. So this is being taken very seriously. There's a strong focus on this. And outbreaks in each of the different sectors are presented each week. So we'd be happy to share that information with you.
And thank you. One of the, I wrote some notes, and I don't even remember. Okay. Let me see. Just a couple of emails that I've received. I think that one, I was trying to find it. One was where there was a health department, I believe, that enforced the mandate or enacted the mandate, and maybe there was an overlap in school district. Has, are we going to have more of those, and do we think that that's addressed? Then I received an email, Ellen, I think you received that as well, where a parent wanted to move a child from a district to another district because of there being more protective factors and the parent being afraid for the child in the school that they were in, but had difficulty moving that child. Of course, you know, I believe and I know that there should be a statewide mask mandate. That's what makes sense. The White House has asked for that based on the most recent data and science from CDC. You know, I believe the CDC, no matter, I believe the science. You know, I don't pick and choose the science. But I think that when we see these type of situation, it just goes to show why there's a need for a statewide mask mandate. And just wondering if we've heard of those situations. How do we address those situations?
So we have heard of those situations where, and let me address them separately if I could. The one is when a school is ambiguously situated. And we have heard of those circumstances. And we've involved our deputy superintendent for finance and operations, his staff, along with MDHHS, to tease out really what is the local health department that is responsible for a given school. It's unusual for there to be these circumstances, but yes, they have occurred, as you and I have discussed. So MDHHS ends up being the arbiter of whether that's, you know, Oakland or Macomb, Macomb or Wayne, and, and, and. So that's one thing. The second thing is that to your issue of choice, parents over the last close to three decades in the state have had wide ranges of choice and have made those choices based on myriad factors. The protection or lack thereof, the freedom or lack thereof, district by district, relative to mitigation strategies relative to the pandemic, has become a new factor during the pandemic. So yes, we do have some parents that are making decisions about their children's schooling based on their sense of the seriousness or lack thereof, the liberty or lack thereof in a given district. And I'm deliberately using language, if you will, on both sides of a debate so that people can understand that people shop for different reasons. I mean, there are people that want ostensibly more protection, and there are people that argue that they want more freedom for their children. So I just share that with you, that those choices, those choice decisions are taking place really for two groups of parents. I do believe, though, that increasingly in the state, there is an understanding of the value of vaccinations and a growing understanding of the importance of masks as another layer of that broader mitigation strategy or set of strategies.
Right. I do agree. I do, you know, we hear from parents all the time, and we see the data that shows us that people want mask mandates. They want their children protected as well as the vaccines. And it's unfortunate that we do have people who talk louder and, you know, make threats that get attention. I just, I want to make, just making note, because you talked about MDHHS. And again, if they can get into the local areas and make these decisions, really, it should be a statewide decision. I do also want to make mention, because I don't try to argue with people at this table anymore, especially those people who just are not going to follow the science that we do. And I do want to make note that I did have in my mailbox an email from a health officer who was very disappointed that we did have a board member that continues to rattle off numbers as it relates to the flu versus this pandemic. We do see more and more children. I think I saw the outbreaks now are up to over 100 at this point in time, and they're growing exponentially. We have seen our children being hospitalized. We have seen our children die, and they don't have to. Children shouldn't be dying. Children shouldn't be getting these illnesses, these long-term illnesses, should not be having these effects to their organs that we're seeing, and should not be hospitalized. There are 26 children right now that are in Michigan hospitals right now, and they don't have to be. And I'm praying for those children. But we cannot keep being from this board table, spewing this information. And I get the calls, and people are asking me, are these people speaking on behalf of the State Board of Education? And that is not the case. I remember working under H1N1, and there were 318 deaths within that pandemic. We have exceeded that. And that was one of the worst flu years. So I just want to put that information out.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pew.
Mr. Chairman.
To Ms. Snyder and then Mr. McMillan.
So two direct questions for you, Dr. Rice, and then just another statement. The last thing you said was that you sensed and understood things about vaccines. And what I want to ask you is, do you understand, are you sensing an increasing amount of respect that people have for those who may choose not to get the vaccine? And the second direct question is, what role are you willing to play to encourage the students of the state, the parents of the state, that there is a choice that is involved here?
Right. So let's be clear. We've had vaccinations in the country for two-thirds of a century. Vaccinations are not new to the country. And mandated vaccinations, with the exception of religious and medical exceptions, are very much ingrained in our regular day-to-day lives within the country. So that's one piece. The second piece is, did I make the statement about the growing feeling about the importance of vaccinations based on the numbers? 5.7 billion vaccine doses administered worldwide, almost a billion of those doses in the last 28 days, millions of doses administered in the state, 9.7 million doses administered in the state. Those aren't my opinions. Those are the numbers. So I talk about the growing feeling of acceptance of and the science around vaccines and vaccinations because I'm looking at growing numbers. That's all I'm doing. I'm looking at the fact that two-thirds of Michigan residents 16 and older have gotten at least one vaccine dose. So that's what I'm speaking to. I'm speaking to growing numbers.
So I did not hear your willingness to acknowledge that vaccination is a choice. And I did not hear your willingness to acknowledge that you have a role in acknowledging that and encouraging it. Not just that vaccine is something that we should welcome at all times regardless or because there's a history. It's important to hear from our leaders that there is a choice in the matter, regardless of the science, regardless of the history. That's a really important factor for us to continue to discuss at this table.
So I believe, to answer your question, I believe in the importance and the value of upholding religious and medical exemptions to vaccine mandates or vaccination mandates. But in general, I believe that people ought to be vaccinated against a disease that has killed millions of people worldwide, that's killed almost 21,000 people in our state in less than a year and a half.
So perhaps you can't say the words, I believe that it's okay to have a choice, but it is okay to have a choice. And I appreciate you at least being willing to expand on it. As far as the data that we have here at the table that we continue to discuss over and over and over again, we have never in the history of infectious disease continued to routinely test asymptomatic individuals for the flu, for COVID, for anything. So all of the data we are going on, we cannot compare and contrast it to the decades we've had before where flu deaths are unfortunately a reality of humanity. So when we put that against a backdrop of character assessments, when we think about debating policy and sharing with one another what we think, my science, your science, there's still a fact here that we can't escape. We've never acquired the data on that level. So you spend month after month after month in this enduring portion, as you say, but we have to remember there isn't comparison and contrast the way that we should be able to compare and contrast when we make statements like this. And we can't assume that we will end deaths for flu. We won't. These viruses are highly infectious. They will work themselves out throughout a population, whether we're vaccinated or not. They are smart. They continue to develop and mutate. That's something we've never evaded. So regardless of science and data compare, contrast, it's not, we sit here and we make character assumptions and attacks on each other instead of acknowledging that the debate is far greater than that. You know, no one person has all the facts, all the data. No one person is setting forth all of the everything on everything, and if you don't get in line with me, then you're just spreading misinformation or you're harming people. And I think that we need to stop approaching each other within that narrative.
Okay. Fair enough. I'm going to continue to share COVID numbers every month until the board tells me that they no longer have an interest in those numbers or until there's no longer a pandemic.
I don't think you'll get that because we're rooted in the narrative that I just discussed. We are able to attack and assess each other's character according to one set of information, and that's where we're at. So we'll continue to endure it.
I share data.
But I won't not comment on it.
Fair enough. Mr. McMillan?
You had mentioned that you're going to be bringing back outbreak information, I think, later in the meeting. I talked to a superintendent. I talked to a superintendent recently who told me that their county health department shared with them that an outbreak is one child giving something to another, just one more child, that is less harmful than the flu, the CDC says. Clearly, the science is that for those children, it is scientific that it's less harmful than the flu. So that is an outbreak for that county. So I would like to know if that's how an outbreak is defined, is simply one child giving something that's less harmful than the flu to another child when you report those numbers?
That's fine. I appreciate that. That's, I think that's important.
Because outbreaks sounds like hundreds or large, maybe one to one other and it's less harmful than the flu according to the CDC.
Yeah, no, that's right. Okay, thank you. President Albridge, Vice President Pugh.
Yeah, so, Mr. McMillan, you keep mentioning it's less harmful than the flu.
CDC, right.
Can I finish? Thank you. What I was about to say is, I would be happy to take a look at that if you could share with us the link to the page on the CDC that says that. I'd be happy to.
It's on my website, tomforSPE.com.
Yeah, I'm not going to your website. If you could share with us, because you want us to acknowledge it, so if you could share it with us, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Vice President Pugh.
When I walked into the building, I thought I saw on the doors that masks were required. Is that true?
We require them for state employees, that is true. We are not permitted to require them as a part of the Open Meetings Act. So masks are required for the 48,000 state employees who enter state facilities, that is accurate. Masks are not required at open public meetings.
And, let me just say, because I keep hearing this word "choice" when we're talking about a pandemic that most of the world feels is killing people and people are dying and as a result of it. I wish I could live in a world where I didn't see this. But we keep throwing that term "choice" around. It is not a choice. You know, I'll say it again, that I have to sit across from and between board members who will not say whether or not they were vaccinated and God forbid if they were vaccinated and they're telling other people that they don't have to be, but they will not wear a mask, which are two of the only mechanisms that we have to keep ourselves safe. So I do want to put that out there, but when we look at our children in classrooms, the data shows that one child can infect half of, if you're looking at a child, the model showed that a classroom of 25 children, within three hours without masks, that child could infect half of his classroom, whereas with a mask, it would be five hours, I'm sorry, five days, five days, 120 hours. This is not a question about personal choice. When you can harm me, children are being sent to school and can harm other children and that's a very selfish way of thinking and I know that it will not.
This is where you get called to order because, no, 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 no.
No, no, you, excuse me.
No, Michael, you cannot call people selfish at the board table.
Ms. Tilly, she wasn't referring to you by name.
I'm calling the board member to order.
She was not referring to you by name, you are not in line. Ms. Tilly, you're up next.
Are you going to be a chairman or not?
I am calling the board member, no, I have the right under Robert's order.
Ms. Tilly asked to be recognized.
Thank you.
She's being recognized, thank you.
Be a chairman, try being a chairman.
Your job is not getting done.
Ms. Tilly is recognized.
I'm not sure who all joined the White House cause in the beginning of this pandemic. I definitely had the opportunity to join and did. One of the things that former Vice President Pence said was that this is three times as worse as the flu. One of the concerns in the classroom, we're definitely concerned about our students, we're also concerned about our teachers, support staff, administrators, we're also concerned about, you know, children can catch the disease and be asymptomatic and then take it home and spread it to their loved ones who can become very ill. So I think we forget about those points as well. But also, from my understanding, Dr. Pugh is the only one amongst us that has a background in health. We're not health experts, we're not epidemiologists. I don't think that at every board meeting, we should make this the theme as if we're experts on this subject. If anything, we need to bring in an expert to speak to us on this subject so we have clarity and we can hopefully get on the same page, but we're not experts on this. And I really feel like this is taking away from other business with us not being experts on it and I would like to get on to other business as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Ms. Snyder, to you, and then we're going to pivot to the rest of the agenda.
There is a disciplinary procedure that we will begin to follow with Robert's Rules of Order or these meetings will continue to be out of hand.
Thank you.
It is not acceptable for board members to bring such personality and disorderly conduct to this table in such a fashion. And when another member calls that member to order, it is your job or other people's job to consider the impact of that type of conduct. I will discuss that further as we talk about board norms, which is exactly what you guys met about this summer to discuss. This has to change. This discussion is not functional, it's not healthy, and it does not give way to debate or policy that is proper for our kids and the students of this state. We need to continue to discuss that today.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the presentation. We are pivoting, we are going to move on to our next agenda.
You're going to deny me to speak?
No, you've spoken quite a bit already and I imagine you'll speak additionally during the meeting. The next item on the agenda is the presentation on assessment and accountability. This presentation will provide an update on the results of the 2020-2021 State Summit of Assessments as well as a summary of the findings included in both the Benchmark Assessment Report and Read by Grade 3 Report created in collaboration with the Education Policy Innovation Collaborative at Michigan State University. Presenters are Dr. Delsa Chapman, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student and School Supports, Andy Middlestead, Director of Educational Assessment and Accountability, and Dr. Catherine Strunk, Co-Director of the Education Policy Innovation Collaborative, or EPIC, at Michigan State University. We appreciate Dr. Strunk being with us today. She has a limited amount of time to be with us. She's capped at a hard stop at 11 o'clock, I believe. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning to our Board of Education, MDE staff and guests. Today, our assessment and accountability update will be presented by Mr. Andy Middlestead, Director of the Office of Educational Assessment and Accountability. Mr. Middlestead will highlight our governed accountability per state and federal requirements. Additionally, he will share our 2021 M-Step assessment results. As Dr. Rice shared, we do have joining us today Dr. Catherine Strunk from Michigan State University's Education Policy Innovative Collaborative, who will highlight the results of our 2021 Benchmark Assessments and the preliminary Read by Grade 3 Retention Estimates. And now to Andy to highlight assessment and accountability requirements. Andy?
Thank you. Good morning, Board. I'm glad to be here today to share a little bit about where we landed in terms of requirements around assessment and accountability this past school year and then share some assessment results like Dr. Chapman just shared. First, I want to summarize a little bit about where we landed in terms of requirements from either the federal law or the state law. So first, this first slide is about accountability. So you'll notice in this slide and the next one, there's two columns, one about the 2019-20 school year and then one about this most recent school year, the 2020-21 year. So in terms of accountability, you go back to 1920. We did receive a waiver from the federal government from our federal accountability system. We did not receive a waiver or flexibility from our state accountability system in 1920. Now let me briefly describe, the federal accountability system is our index system. That is that numerical system that we've used to do federal accountability requirements for the ESA law. When we talk about state accountability, that is the A to F system that we've discussed before here. So this last school year, the federal government did again waive the federal accountability process, but we did not receive any waiver from the state requirements for the state A to F system. Now when we move to assessment, you'll see a similar chart here. In 1920, assessment requirements were waived at both the federal and state level. For the 2021 school year, this most recent year, we did not receive flexibility from the federal government to not administer tests. So we did not receive a waiver from the U.S. Department of Education, even though we did submit a request, we did not receive that flexibility. And then since we did not receive flexibility from the U.S. Department of Education, it didn't really matter if we received state flexibility or not for the required to administer
Thanks, Andy, for those highlights. As we move into our 2021 M-Step results, I would like to take this opportunity to thank our LEAs and more specifically our students and their families who exhibited resilience during an unexpected, unprecedented assessment period. Special acknowledgement to the administrators, instructors and support staff who put forth earnest effort during the 2021 M-Step administration. Andy will now share the results by content area and their associated grade spans. Andy?
Yes, as Dr. Chapman said, Michigan students and teachers showed remarkable resilience during these last 18 months across the board and certainly there is COVID-19 pandemic-created challenges to instruction during that 2021 school year. As a result, we certainly would say that the data from the spring PSAT 8-9, the SAT and the M-Step assessments should be used with some level of caution. Let's discuss briefly what test participation looked like this last spring. So approximately 70% of eligible students participated in spring testing for ELA and mathematics and approximately 61% of eligible students participated in science or social studies assessments. So as for background, historically, over 95% of our students participate in these state assessments annually. And that waiver I mentioned earlier around accountability that the U.S. Department of NDA gave us permitted less than 95% participation this last school year. Normally, that is a requirement of a state to have 95% or higher participation rates. And then given the varying degree of participation, these test results should be used carefully when compared against previous years. Obviously, last year was very different, so we would certainly use caution when comparing them to previous test scores. And then district administrators know their students' experiences last year best and can determine to what extent state summative scores might be helpful with instruction with students during this last year. And basically, what we're trying to say here is, local administrators know what school looked like last year best, they know how many students took their tests, so they're able to use their best judgment in terms of how to proceed from there. So you had 10% participation and you had a very interrupted school year, that's one thing. There's other districts in the state that had an in-person type school year with lots of participation to look at them differently. Let's first look at the M-Step results for English Language Arts. Where efficiency rates across the board there for those grade levels decreased within 3.3 percentage points. So across the blue there, that is the bottom, the 2021 rose on the bottom and the 2019, the last school year we had test data, is on the top. So we lost up to 3.3 percentage points for English Language Arts, which is 3 through 7. When you look at mathematics, it's a similar situation. Test scores did decrease up to 3 to 6 percentage points across those grade levels. When you look at social studies, test scores declined by a maximum of 3 percentage points. I will say briefly before we move on, our science assessment was new this last year so we don't have comparison data from science from 19 to 20, that's why there's not a science slide, but we did have a science assessment. The PSAT 8-9, which is our eighth grade assessment, looks a little bit different. You'll see in English Language Arts, we had a 1% increase in their results and then we saw a decrease of about 5% in mathematics. Here's our SAT with essay results. Again, the SAT is part of our Michigan merit exam, it's part of our 11th grade assessment. So there's this increase in English Language Arts scores there and then a slight decrease in mathematics. From here, I would like to transition to Dr. Strunk, who is online. I will move your slides, I think is the best way to do it. Catherine, if you're available?
Yep. That works great. Thank you and thank you all for having me here again, I appreciate it. So, working with MDE and CEPI and the Michigan Data Hubs, we put out two reports two weeks ago aligned with the MDE release of the M-Steps. This report was legislatively required, looking at the 2021 Benchmark Assessment. So as you all know, the return to loan legislation required that Michigan schools administer benchmark assessments to K-8 students in at least the fall and the spring of the 2021 school year and asked that MDE with CEPI and us report those results to the legislature by September 1st, which we did. So a couple pieces of background before I launch into the results, and there's a, I don't know if you've been provided with, but there are reports online on our website to see the details. But the important context to know is a couple things. One, districts were allowed to choose among four approved assessment vendors or they could use a different assessment that meets the criteria that were outlined in the law. This is important because the law requires us to tell you the proportion of kids who scored significantly behind grade level, but the way that this is determined or defined varies across each of the assessment vendors. It's also important because if they weren't one of the four approved assessment vendors, we were unable to use those data in our analyses. They also required that the data was provided in aggregate form to MDE, which meant that EPIC and CEPI worked with the Michigan Data Hubs to transition from the individual level data to the aggregate data at the district level. All of this together required that we ended up not being able to use all of the student data from the sample. So we have about 74% of districts representing about 61% of K-8 students in Michigan public schools. Should note that this sample is not representative of the overall population of Michigan K-8 students. This varies across vendors and I'll explain a little bit more about that on the next couple slides, but the takeaway is that the students included in our analyses are less likely to be Black or African-American, less likely to be economically disadvantaged or homeless, and less likely to receive special education services. Just one more quick thing, we had about 46% of Michigan students in our sample represented by the NWA MAP Growth Assessment, that's about 519 districts. About 45 districts took the Curriculum Associates Eye Ready Assessment, or about 11% of students, that includes Detroit. 64 districts took Renaissance STAR 360, but that's only 4% of students, and fewer than 1% of students took the ICA or K2s Assessment. So when you think about the results I'm about to show you, it's important to remember that we see very different populations of kids and different proportions of kids and from Michigan represented in these tests. Okay, Andy? Great. So this table has a lot going on. This is a summary table and there are more, again, more detail in the report itself, but what we did here is we wanted to show you both ELA and MAP assessments. Again, we were just for this report, we're able to show you the proportion of students scoring, the definition of significantly behind grade level. The top row is MAP, then Eye Ready, STAR, and then Smarter Balanced ICAs. The K2s are separate because the Smarter Balanced ICA doesn't have a K2 test, so MDE worked to create one to go with those districts. The big takeaway is, you know, we did see learning over the course of the school year in 2021. The learning was just slower than a typical pre-pandemic year and this is exactly the same result that we're seeing in districts and states across the country. We've been following closely every single state that comes out with similar results from their benchmark assessments and every single state has the same thing to say. So the first row is, again, this is the 46% of Michigan students, so this is where most of the students are in the, taking an NWA MAP Growth Test and these students are the most representative of students across the state. And we separated into K1 and 2 through 8 because when we worked with MDE and CEPI and the assessment vendors to understand how they defined significantly behind grade level, it was different for K1. it was different for K1 and 2 through 8. And I want to just walk you through a couple of these rows and columns for a second because it's important to understand how to interpret them differently. So, let's look at the 2 through 8 MAP growth. This is the second row. You can see that what they did is they have a linking study that they can say, "Look, kids who take the test in 2nd through 8th grade, we can tell you which level they would have projected to receive a not proficient on the M-Step." So that's how they define for grades 2 through 8 significantly behind grade level. And you can see in the fall, about 27% of students that took this test in reading or ELA, they would have predicted would score not proficient. And that increased to about 34% in the spring. So that's an increase of about 7 percentage points for ELA or reading, or 6 percentage points for math. This is because the way that NWA MAP growth works is they take the test in the fall, but where they should be at that time, and then in the spring, about where they should be at that time, and they assess it that way. And so this looks like about 7% more kids in the spring than in the fall would have scored not proficient on the M-Step in ELA and 6% in math. This is different than the way we understand the rest of the tests that were given in Michigan in benchmark data. So again, let's look at the Curriculum Associates I Ready 2 through 8. This is how they define it from I Ready is, "These are students who they believe would score two or more grade levels behind." And you can see that in the fall, on those benchmark assessments, about 43% of students would have scored two or more grade levels behind in reading, and this decreased to 34%. So it's a decrease of 9 percentage points. This does not mean that students, on average, were learning more than students who took the NWA MAP test. We can't assess that based on these two tests. What we can say is this progress seems like it's slower than what I Ready and Curriculum Associates has for other years across the country. So we don't have this for every single district, of course, because districts were not required to give benchmark assessments before Fall 2020, so we can't compare this to previous year. So again, this looks like learning happened, but learning happened at a slower rate than it would have happened in what we think is a typical school year. Next slide, Andy? Thank you. So this is the second report that we put out. This is, we are the state evaluators for the Read by Grade 3 law. And of course, the Read by Grade 3 law was a little different last year than in previous years. So as you all know, the law was adopted in 2016, and this required schools to identify learners who were struggling with reading and writing and to provide them with a series of additional supports. Of course, retention was at play here in the Read by Grade 3 law. The first year retention was supposed to go into effect was Spring 2020, but of course, we did not have M-Step assessments for that to occur. And so this was the first year in 2021, when the state was asked to look at the ELA assessment in 3rd grade, use a cut score that had been predetermined through a very long process between MDE and stakeholders and experts and practitioners to determine what the right cut score was for the law. And any student who scored below a 1252 on the grade 3 ELA assessment was flagged for retention. And then there's a whole series of things that can happen to have a student either be retained or not retained. I should note again, the sample that we looked at, as Andy noted in the last couple slides on the M-Step, was different than in previous years. About 71.2% of Michigan 3rd grade students took the M-Step in 2021. This is different than the over 95% participation rate that we would normally have. And the students that took the test in 3rd grade this year were more likely to be white, were less likely to be economically disadvantaged, were less likely to be classified as needing special education or English language services, and were more likely to be enrolled in higher-performing districts and in districts that offered fully in-person instruction as of May of 2021. This is important because what this means is that, like with the benchmark assessments, it seems likely that we're actually overestimating the proportion of students who would have scored higher than a 1252 or were underestimating the proportion of students who would have scored lower and would have been flagged for retention, given the kinds of students who took the test. Go ahead to the next slide, Andy? Great, so the top-line results are as follows. And again, there's a report online that provides a lot of detail. But in 2021, 3,661 3rd graders received below the cut score and were flagged for retention. Again, this does not mean they were going to be retained. So about 4.8% of the tested population had scores that made them eligible for retention on the grade 3 M-Step. This is compared to about 4.1% of students who were tested in 2019, who would have been eligible for retention at the time, had retention been in play. When you account for what the good cause exemptions are, so again, these exemptions are for all ELL students who had been, who had had fewer than three years of EL instruction, all IEP and special ed students, all students who had moved districts within the last two years and might not have been provided with IREPS, and students who'd been previously retained and had received intensive instruction for two or more years, as well as students whose parents worked with the superintendent to show proficiency in other areas and therefore were not needed to be retained. All those students could get good cause exemptions. We're only able to control for students or to net out students who are ELs, who are IEP or 504, who had IEPs or 504s, who had been previously retained and who've been enrolled in their district for fewer than two years. When you net out those students, we see about 2.2% of tested 3rd graders would be, could have been retained based on their M-Step ELA scores. It's important to see that the retention eligibility rates are very different among different kinds of students. So for instance, about 13% of tested African-American students would be eligible for retention based on their M-Step score. This is, you know, relative to the 4.8% of the overall population. About 6.6% of Hispanic or Latino students, 7.7% of tested economically disadvantaged students, 9.4% of students enrolled in public school academies, and 9% of students enrolled in urban districts. And then importantly, about 16% of tested students who were enrolled in districts that were in the bottom quartile of ELA performance on the 2019 M-Step would be flagged for retention. 22.3% of students who are enrolled in partnership schools would be flagged for retention. And then about 15.5% of districts that remained fully remote in May of 2021 would be, had been flagged, would be flagged for retention this year on the M-Steps. So that's my quick summary. And of course, I'm always happy to answer questions, but Dr. Rice is right, I do have a hard out at 11:00 a.m.
Thank you, Dr. Strunk. Dr. Chapman, Mr. Middlestead. Let's go to a board member. Comments or questions? Board members, comments or questions? President Albridge?
I understand that our speaker has a hard stop at 11:00, so I'm just going to ask her a quick question, and then I'll reserve my other questions for you guys later. Just going back to that previous slide, it says 15% fully remote. My question is, how do we know that? If they were fully remote, then I'm assuming they couldn't have taken the M-Step. So how do we know that 15.5% of those that were fully remote in May of 2021 would have been, would have qualified for retention?
That is a very good question, and thank you for the note on that. So, two things. As you all know, we collected data along with MDE and CEPI last year, looking at what districts were offering. And so these were students that are enrolled in districts that were only offering remote instruction as of May 2021. We don't actually have individual-level data to understand what a student was doing. One, two, you're correct. Very few students in districts that were fully remote tested. Of the ones who tested, 15.5% would have been flagged for retention. We don't know what the number would be if everybody tested in those districts.
Thank you, thank you for that response. Ms. Snyder?
I just wanted to know, one of the slides kind of stood out to me, not just from experience with a special education child, but I noticed that there were more losses mathematically than there were ELA. And one of the things I often hear is, "It's easier for me to learn ELA online than it is for me to learn..." Like, I need in-person for math, right? I need that back and forth. So, I just wonder if that can be informative as we address literacy, regardless of how we address it. Because oftentimes, when we think about getting kids extra help after school, whatever types of process there is to that, transportation now doesn't necessarily have to be something we consider a hindrance because we're seeing on a mass scale, right, that kids learn better. ELA, they can make up the difference better online than they can with math, if you will. I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there as something that might inform how we encourage intervention in whatever possible way we can to make, you know, to make the moves we need to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Other board member, questions or comments? Questions or comments? Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. Do we know, here at MDE, how many students were actually retained by the time we got to the end of good cause exemptions or parents and superintendents, principals deciding that the student should be moved to 4th grade? Do we have that number at all, or...?
It's a number that's in process, and I'll defer to the presenters, but it is in process.
Yes, there's a unique fall collection that CEPI has to do to collect actual retentions. And we'll have those final numbers on or before October 18th, when Epic's going to deliver another final retention report to you.
Okay, and one more to Dr. Strunk. I will tell you that I was somewhat confused when I did see the first table showing the NWEA with negatives and then all of the other benchmark assessments with positives. I then went to your report, which I appreciated, and it clarified. But just so I know I'm reading it correctly here and interpreting it correctly, it basically is because the vendors have different definitions for what they're determining for growth and for, well, for growth, I guess, is the best word to use there, even though they may use a different term. So, am I correct on that? I guess I'm looking for validation. I'm seeing headsets, so, yes.
Yeah, you're correct most of the way, so that is right. So every vendor had a different way of interpreting significantly behind grade level. And part of that is because of what they test at different times of year. So the NWA test score, test is actually made to say, "Here's where you should be in the fall, and here's where you should be in the spring, and based on that, we can predict what you would do on an M-Step at the end of the year."
Right.
The other tests are done differently. So they say, "Here's what we know about you about grade level standards in the fall, and here's what we know about grade level standards in the spring," and so we can see a decrease over time in the proportion that would have scored below.
All right, thank you.
So as you know, the school districts had a statutory choice in the, as mentioned earlier in the presentation. And each of those choices comes with some pros and some cons in the assessment instruments. These are, in my view anyway, benchmark assessments or educator assessments. They help us understand better quickly where kids are and by extension, where we need to go with each of them. Ms. Lipton, and then Dr. Pugh.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I just would like just to get some clarity on the definition of proficiency. My understanding is that proficiency is somewhat of a moving target in terms of oftentimes, it's used and people that don't, or they're not in the testing field, will say, you know, "Oh, my gosh, you know, X number of students are not proficient," or what have you, as though that means that, you know, proficiency... My understanding is that has a very specific term of art in the testing regime. And in some academic literature that I read, proficiency at times is even based on the percentage of students that would be expected to get an A, for example. Which, you know, if you're looking at a bell curve, you know, that would be like really the highest of the high. So my question is, can you just explain to me, is there a overall definition of proficiency? Or is it really based on a yearly determination of a cut score? And is it really the moving target that my gut tells me that it is? Am I right on that, or am I completely...?
It is assessment by assessment specific, and this slide is useful for that rediscussion. Professor Strunk, to you.
Well, actually, I think that this is, that's a good question. I think that it'd be better answered by Andy, since he is the one who's worked with the proficiency cuts.
Okay, Mr. Middlestead.
Okay, back to me. I'm happy to help. So, it depends. So let me talk about M-Step first. So proficiency on the M-Step is determined by a panel of educators that we pulled together to determine how well does a student need to do to display that they are proficient in mastering that grade level's content standard. So they come up with a proficient cut score, and they also have an above proficient and a slightly proficient. That, you know, there's four cut scores or labels that a student can receive. So we bring these educators together to work through the assessment itself, and they determine based on their experience what proficient means. These are called criterion-referenced exams. Now, when we change topic to PSAT or SAT, these are norm-referenced exams, as are many of these benchmark assessments. These tests are more based on your comment about what percent of kids might get an A. For example, on the SAT, it's based on what, for some percent of students, and I can look it back up, I have forgotten at this point, but it's what percent of students need to get what score to receive a B or better on a credit-bearing course their freshman year of college. So it's a little bit of a different measuring stick when you talk about a norm-referenced test like the PSAT or the SAT. That's the short version. Does that help?
It does. Can I just, just sort of make sure I understand? So, when the media, for example, will report proficiency, or when the term proficiency is used, it would be helpful to drill down because I fear that sometimes the term proficiency is used amongst those that may not really understand the nuances to create panic and fear when in fact, if a better understanding of what that term means, as you've explained it, might give better understanding of what the true meaning of those numbers represent. And I just get concerned when standardized tests are used in a very high-stakes way, you know, determining closing of schools and whether a teacher is evaluated properly or what have you. And you've given the richness of what is really behind that number, and maybe we all in general just need to be very expansive in our understanding before we start throwing teachers and schools and students under the bus. That's just my own bugaboo about standardized tests. So, thank you for that explanation. That was helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. I think the takeaway is that comparing cross-assessments is done with peril. It's easier to compare within assessment results, that is to say, within the results for a given assessment, than it is cross-assessment results. Nonetheless, there are limitations associated with any of these comparisons, particularly during a pandemic. Dr. Pugh, to you.
To that point, Dr. Rice, and then just following up on what Ellen said, I guess my, I just want to talk about the conclusions, the headlines as well, and then the high-stakes decisions. And Dr. Pritchett asked a question, and so we do expect children to be retained based on this data?
So let me just say this. So, let's back up. There's a state statute associated with this. That state statute requires us to notify parents when their children score below 1252 on that 3rd grade ELA assessment. CEPI did that. Local school districts are aware of those young people. So that's on the statutory side. It's on the technical compliance with law side. That said, however, local educators across the state, as a rule, there are exceptions, but as a rule, they do not agree that retention is a legitimate strategy for improving reading results. I don't. The state board has indicated that it doesn't, and local educators across the state don't either. So it will be interesting to see, in the midst of a pandemic, if they hold true to that in working with parents or if some of them move off of that, given the presence of the pandemic and concerns about unfinished or disrupted learning during the pandemic. Does that help?
Yeah, but I'm going to go to like a yes or no answer. Right now, the legislature, the legislation... the legislation as written, the legislature possibly as expected, is expecting that some children will be retained. We don't like it, but, but the, but right now, children could be retained.
The law, the answer is yes. The law requires the notification of parents. The law does not require the retention of children. There are a number of good cause exemptions that can be accessed by parents. There are a number of opportunities for local administrators, local superintendents to reflect upon a good cause exemption associated therewith. There have been a number of superintendents who have said, this is not good for children. It's bad for children. It stigmatizes children and does nothing to improve their reading, not the supports in the law, but the retentions in the law. And they have said that they will not participate. But proof's in the pudding and the pudding's coming in five weeks in that October 18th report.
And children could possibly be retained.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of more questions. Well, okay.
And then to, and then to Dr. Pritchett. Excuse me, let me try it again. Dr. Albrecht.
Okay. Let me just ask some, let, let me make sure I'm, I'm correct. And I just, because I was looking at some headlines and I just wanted to put a framing around this. When was the test, when were the tests taken? What was the test period? If you can tell me that again?
The state summative tests were given in April and May.
In April. Okay. April and May of last spring. So.
It ended June 3rd, I believe, was the last day.
All right. So children were forced to go back to school in March. At that time, you know, just some headlines, some data. The alpha variant was most widespread here in Michigan and maybe the state of Florida. We had a positivity rate, I just read one that was around 16.5%. It was a time that children across this country in Michigan had, well, first of all, the highest increase here in Michigan. But I believe it was the, I know it was the highest rate of COVID cases per capita. And we saw their parents being impacted as well as children being hospitalized as the highest rate. During that time, we had the Department of Health and Human Services that asked children or parents to take their children out of schools. They asked the schools to shut the doors down during this time that they were taking this test. It, it just, it's just amazing to me, going back to, to a board member Tilly's point, you know, we have to make these connections. Because now here I am reading headlines that says that our children are failing. We're failing our children. We put our children in harm's way. And I'm sorry, I'm talking over your heads. I'm, I'm looking that way. I'm not, you know, I know you, you're nodding your head. Yes, I know you understand this. But we're put, we put our children and their parents in harm's way. You know, there were children who are hospitalized. There are children who will have long-term effects because there was somebody who thought that it was wise to go and collect data that to me is meaningless because you can't even compare it. I mean, that's just on a good day. You can't compare these populations. We don't know who took the test and who didn't. We cannot say who, whose parent died, whose grandparent and caretaker died, who was orphaned, what child was in the hospital, what child's school had to, an outbreak and they had to leave the building. This is garbage and it's just unbelievable that we have to be here talking about this. Do we want our children in classes? Yes. Do we want our children learning? But we'll be able, someone will write a headline or a headline will be written because some children were at home that, that they didn't learn. And we know teachers were teaching. But we know we dragged children out of their safe spaces into areas where disease was widespread. And there were lives that were lost at an exponential rate because we wanted, we had to bring, take those children or force those children, or those children were forced into classrooms.
So I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Dr. Pugh, but I would just like to append to that, that we did apply for.
Yes, absolutely.
Federal accountability waivers and federal assessment waivers. The former, the accountability waivers were granted. The federal assessment waivers were not granted. So we agree this was not the year to, to administer state summit of assessments. We were compelled to do so by the U.S. Department of Education. We fought the good fight. It wasn't successful. I will tell you, and we've had this conversation as well, I do believe that there is a utility under normal circumstances in state summit of assessments, not during a pandemic. I also believe that during a pandemic, that benchmark assessments on which Professor Strunk has reported this morning are tremendously useful in discerning, as I said to Dr. Pritchett, where children are and by extension, what we need to do with each of them. They were more than sufficient in a pandemic to address our assessment needs. That's not just my opinion. It's also the opinion of the vast majority of educators in, in Michigan. To, I'm sorry, yeah.
I just, just, just to your point, I do want to commend you and, and Dr. Albrecht for, for leading a national effort for trying to keep us from having to force children into classrooms to take tests. And I, I just wanted to, you know, I just want to say that if it weren't for this, this test, there would have been children who were not sickened, who were not hospitalized and parents who probably would still be alive if it were not for these children being forced to go in and take this exam.
Thank you. President Albrecht.
So I, I appreciate Ellen, Pam and Michael's comments because they kind of wrap up what I was going to say as well. One, I think to Ellen's remarks, you know, cut scores are one thing. It, it doesn't really matter. But when we start attaching misnomers to them, I think that's when the confusion really comes into play. So words like proficiency versus, you know, college and career ready, which is one of the things that drives me crazier than anything. And then we don't define what they mean. So I think it's really important that we're always putting those definitions. But I, I guess my question is, why can't we go to something that everyone understands like average? I mean, or median? Like, we all get what those numbers mean, but why do we have to attach these, this language to it that makes suggestions like if your kid's not proficient, then somehow they're going to, you know, they are not intelligent or they're not learning or they're not getting the proper education, none of which is, is accurate. So that would be my, my first comment. The second is the testing itself. And, and I agree, you know, there's validity issues, there's reliability issues. I don't think any of these numbers mean anything at this point. I think there's going to be a huge asterisk for the rest of our existence when it comes to these particular numbers because you cannot use them, or you, I should say, you should not use them for any high stakes consequences because they're just not, they're not valid. And to Pam's point, I, I heard from parents who didn't want their kids to have to go into the classroom last spring. And they were told by the school that they had to send their child to the classroom for the sole purpose of taking a test or that child would fail. That to me is unconscionable. And I think we stepped in and I, I hope that we helped in that situation. But for any parent to have to make that decision, these, this was a parent who had a health issue at home, who was trying to protect their family. And to be told that by their school in a pandemic is ridiculous. And so I, I'm just, I, I, I hope that we can get to a saner position here with assessments in general. Whether we're in a pandemic or not, things like misnomers, you know, not adequately defining what we're talking about when we're talking about assessments. And I do agree with you that assessments can be an important part of the educational landscape when they're used appropriately. But when we start attaching high stakes consequences to them, that is when they are not being used appropriately. And I hope this board, I know that we have been very strong on this. I hope we can continue to be very strong on this and, and push back on some of this and continue to advocate with the legislature that they need to rescind some of their poorly thought out laws in the state that are harmful and clearly in a pandemic are just unconscionable.
So, so just a 20 second appending to that. The feds waived high stakes accountability requirements associated with state summit of assessments. The feds should have waived state summit of assessments. But they waived the high stakes accountability requirements that attach to those assessments. The state legislature did not. And those high stakes accountability requirements, including educator evaluations and A through F, are still going to roll out in the coming year. We'll have more conversation as a board about that, which you're absolutely right. It wasn't the time to, to do state summit of assessments in the midst of a pandemic. And it certainly wasn't the time to attach high stakes accountability requirements to them. It's 10:56. I want to be cognizant of the fact that we're going to lose Professor Strunk in four minutes. We still have Dr. Chapman and Mr. Middlestead who don't have the same opportunity, if you will. But are there other questions for Professor Strunk before she leaves? Because I do not want to fail to get all those questions in while she is here. Any questions more for Professor Strunk? Going once, twice, thrice? If not, questions for Dr. Chapman and Mr. Middlestead. Ms. Snyder.
Questions and statements. I'm curious, are there dollars attached to summit of assessments? Percentage of students that take them?
Do me a favor. Could you speak up? Just.
Sure.
Are there?
Are there dollars attached to percentage of summative tests taken for school districts? Any funding attached to summative tests?
That's a, that's a two-year response. That's a normal year versus this past year response.
Right, right. So you're asking, is there funding to the schools attached to their participation?
Is there any funding whatsoever attached to students that take summative tests for school districts?
In theory, yes. In a normal year, part of the Every Student Succeeds Act includes that 95% participation rule. And the participation is one of a numerate, number of indicators that essentially tied to their federal support. This year, that requirement was waived, like we said, so it was not tied to any dollars.
And then I would just ask.
So if I could, Ms. Snyder, just to, to append to your, your question and response, under normal circumstances, yes, the waiver of accountability requirements, high stakes accountability requirements by the feds included that 95% participation rate.
Thank you.
Yep.
My other question is forgotten now. So I'll come back to it.
We're, we're, we're motel six. We'll leave the lights on. We're coming back to you. Dr. Pugh.
A board member Snyder made me think of a question while she's thinking of her other question. How much would a testing company have lost if they would not have administered this, this test?
So I, I think that's, it really, it turns on whether you're talking about the benchmarks or state summatives. It turns on whether you're talking about the base amount or the variable amount. There's, there's fixed. And then there's variable on top of. If, if, if the question broadly is, does the testing industry have a vested interest in testing? The answer is absolutely.
To the tune of.
What's the line item, I think is what she's asking.
Yeah. Not benchmarks.
Can you, can you share what ish, what it costs us to do state summit of assessments each year? Do you know that off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head. We can get, you know, there's so many layers to that, but we can get to that number.
I mean, is like a hundred thousand?
Oh, no.
Is it like $500?
No, no, this is, this is, this is, this is millions of dollars.
Oh, okay.
And, and this is, I just want to be clear, that's, that's in terms of the physical administration. That's very different from the development thereof. That's why, and, and Andy can really peel the layers back on this. And we'd be happy to share this with you in greater detail. But the administration is separate and distinct from the creation thereof. The creation, and this is why the hesitation on, on the response to your question, the creation of those tests took place irrespective of the administration of those tests. The, as that, the creation costs were going to be born one way or the other. We created them in advance of, you can't create them in the moment before. Those are sunk costs, if you will.
When you say we, you mean the assessment?
Department, the department, yes. O E A, A, the department and, and extended, and extended folk. I got you. Give me one second. Okay. It is the administration that, that is set aside if you don't have to test. The challenge is, when you test, but test a, a smaller number of people, most of those costs are borne nonetheless, right? So let's say, for example, I have a classroom of 25 children. I test 10 kids. I'm still there. There's a cost associated with that administration. Most of that cost isn't in paper and pencils because mostly we're not using paper and pencils anymore. Ms. Snyder to you.
You may or may not laugh. We'll see. We'll see. While you're at it, getting the numbers of the costs for tests that we don't like, please also get the cost for vaccine mandates, which we do like. How much are we paying Pfizer? Interesting contrast, right? Things that we don't like, things that we do like. How much does it cost? What, what does that mean? I think it's worth to have the full conversation. And then maybe even how many millions or billions of dollars we spent, pharmaceutical companies have spent paying out for people who've been harmed. Just a thought process.
You know what? We'd, we'd be happy to get you.
I'm still talking. Let me finish. Thank you. I said for people that have been harmed. That was just a side note. What I now remember is that at one point in time before COVID, we had a presentation from, I cannot remember who it was from, but we had a handout about the cutoff scores. And it had a list of the educators that were on the committee. And it, it better defined proficiency and what it meant. I wish I had it in front of me while we were talking about this in this discussion. But that, again, was before COVID. And if we could get Marilyn another copy of it, that would be good. Because then as we continue to have discussions about assessment and accountability, we can refer back to that document that we, were shared. So.
So, so a note. We've discussed more than a half dozen assessments in the last 45 minutes. They, they each have different ways of assessing young people. And so it's going to be more complex than a, a conversation about M step. We'd be happy to provide you with that information. M step itself is complex, but it is nonetheless constrained. That is to say, you know, a conversation fully about M step is a lot easier to, to digest than it is when you have not only M step, but PSAT eight, nine, and then you include MAP, I Ready, STAR, you know, the smarter balance, which is a, a relationship to M step and, and, and. So there are a lot of different assessments on the table, some criterion referenced, some norm referenced. It's just a complex topic. And there are psychometricians, Andy, as you well know, being from the field, who themselves differ in their reflections on these assessments. Dr. Pugh.
I, I guess I'm just looking for clarification in the question. Were, were we talking about how much we're spending on assessment? How much we're sent, giving to, did I hear Pfizer?
Right. So, so we'd be happy to try to get a sense of the cost of not simply state summative assessments, but also benchmark assessments in the state. There's some challenge around that, but we also have some numbers around it as well. And we can do reasonable justice in giving you a sense of the cost of those locally chosen national benchmark assessments, what they cost. chosen national benchmark assessments, what they cost. Because most years, we've reimbursed for good portions of the cost associated therewith. So we, we're able to give you a little bit of a sense of an order of magnitude, minimally ballpark, of what benchmark assessments cost and of what state summatives cost. Although, again, that, the latter is a little bit more complicated because we develop those. We don't simply administer them. To the question about vaccines, tell me precisely what you'd like us to ask MDHHS about.
Yeah, with respect to your presentation, I apologize for that comment. I will say that we've talked about a multiple, multiple topics here. Ones we do agree with, we don't consider these things. Ones we don't agree with, we do. And it's just, it's like, okay, let's be consistent. So it would be great, from your perspective, when you, when you talk about the things that we talk about, maybe we should consider how much we're, how much is costing vaccines, students, public health efforts in our schools. I, I just think it would be healthy to note, you know, when we put that on the table, the businesses that are benefiting from testing, businesses that are benefiting from vaccines.
Right. So, so specifically, what number would you like around vaccination, the cost of vaccines?
I think that would be a good conversation to have. I'll have to think about it more.
If you could let us know, and we'd be happy to amass that information. Deputy Superintendent Garand can interface with MDHHS and get that, get that information for you. Who's, who's next up?
Can I, can I just say, because of-
Yes, and then, and then Ms. Lipton on the, on the chat.
Again, this is just, you know, just to put out there. But it, it's difficult to put a value on a life, and I think that vaccines and, and testing for COVID, those types of costs are meant to save lives. I don't think that we can say that directly about summative assessments and, and I, I just don't see that. But, you know, I guess when we look at the value of it, the values of, of each in addition to the cost, I think it's going to be difficult saying that, that the lives saved, you know, what, what that value would be, or lives lost.
I think, I think the, the numbers are up for people's interpretation. Our, our issue would simply be that, that we'll, we'll share whatever numbers are available, and people can interpret them as they, as they choose. I understand your, your point. Ms. Lipton, to, to you.
Yes, thank you. I remember when I served on the School Aid Appropriation Subcommittee, the chair at that time mentioned to all of us that, you know, you have to look at budgets as, you know, moral documents in some way. It's a reflection of a society's decision on what they decide to spend their money on. And so I think that, on my recollection, when I was on approach, was that the administrate, or the, the, we had a, we had a multi-year contract with ACT, which mid, midterm got renegotiated and SAT won the bid. And so you have to contemplate the competitive dealings between SAT and ACT in terms of winning state contracts. And then also, there was a line item for the yearly administration of M-Step, which was, I don't remember the, the number of zeros, but I know it was something, something millions. So that, that much I remember, although it's going back a few years now. So that's, that aside, the question that I had was, it is my understanding, I just want to make sure I'm correct on this, that the, absent the pandemic and the legislative requirement that districts deliver benchmark, districts give benchmark assessments during the pandemic. My understanding is that benchmarks are not mandated, are not mandated to be given. That's something that the, the district decides whether or not to give. Am I right on that?
So Ms. Lipton, historically, benchmarks have not been mandated. Prior to the pandemic, more than 90% of the districts in the state were administering one benchmark assessment or another. A number of us felt, I felt, that there was a value in the midst of a pandemic to ensure that benchmark assessments would be administered for those that were able to take those benchmark assessments, either in person or virtually. They were markedly more flexible than our state summative assessments for a variety of reasons. And I felt that there was some value to making sure that we had some data on every one of our children as we, as we rolled forward. That's different from the state summative assessment requirement, which can only be addressed in person, which cannot be addressed virtually. So the, the value of benchmark assessments, quick information tailored to the educator, focused on children's needs, prescribing what you need to do next with young people, given where they are in particular circumstances, it can be administered virtually and does not require young people to come into school if they haven't come into school during the year. That was the, the expectation. Benchmark assessments are required this year as well, I believe.
Right.
Under, under ever so slightly different circumstances, but they are required as well.
But the, right. So, right. So again, I just, so I think that, just to, to put the, the testing, you know, into some sort of framework, I think we have to look at what tests are required versus what tests are informative. I mean, I don't think, I mean, I'm certainly was never suggesting that all testing is bad. I think informed testing, that informs education, informs instruction, is, is clearly, I think every teacher would say is useful. The, the summative assessments are required and began to be required, if, if I'm not mistaken, as a result of No Child Left Behind, and now, when it was reauthorized as Every Student Succeeds, the yearly summative assessment that all states have to give grades three through eight as a requirement of federal law. And so when it's a requirement to federal law, we don't have a lot of wiggle room, but we can certainly question the, the wisdom of that type of a, of a policy. So that's, that's just my remarks on that.
Very good. Thank you. I want to thank our presenters, Dr. Chapman, Mr. Middlestead, Professor Strunk, and Absentia. Our next presentation is on Educator Workforce Data Report. This is an informational presentation that's an annual update of Educator Workforce Data. Presenters are Dr. Delsa Chapman, backed by popular demand, Ms. Leah Breen, Director of the Office of Educator Excellence, and Ms. Kate Boswell Gallagher, Manager of Data and Accountability in the Office of Educator Excellence. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Presenters, welcome.
Can I interrupt for a technology thing? We're getting messages that people are having difficulty hearing board members. So if you could please speak up, and also if you've got computer technology or papers that are blocking these microphones on the table, if you could make sure that there's a clear line between that so people can hear you better, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and good morning again to our Board of Education, MDE staff, and guests. Today, we have with us Director Leah Breen from the Office of Educator Excellence. She will share with us today our State Board of Education Educator Workforce Report. Leah?
Thank you. And I apologize for Kate's absence. She wasn't able to join us today unexpectedly. You may remember that I have been to the board table the last, I think, three years to present you information about our Education Workforce Data Report. We create this report annually. This year's report, there's a QR code there that you can use to access it. It includes 1920 workforce highlights. SEPI is just finalizing our 2021 data, so we start working on that data as soon as we receive it. This year's report reflects the 1920 highlights. And we have a quick, a metric review of recruitment and recognition, preparation, certification, growth, all areas that are handled by the Office of Educator Excellence. So this report does represent the collective contributions of our partners from across our education ecosystem. They commit daily to the work of developing, supporting, and sustaining a high-quality education workforce to support Michigan's children. It also supports top 10 of the Strategic Education Plan Goal Number Seven, which we have come to present information to you before and will continue to update you on, and that is to increase the number of certified teachers in areas of shortage. So who is this report for, and essentially, why do we create it? We create it for ourselves, the Michigan Department of Education, so we can monitor our progress and success as well as our metrics. We create it for you and other policymakers to help drive decision-making. Our schools, our educator preparation providers, our researchers and our partners, we often get a lot of FOIA requests about educator data, so we started trying to productively and proactively create that and have that accessible for our partners, for the media. We also get a lot of requests from the media and from other community members like parents. So let's take a little bit of a look at the data. First, we'd like to talk a little bit about our office efforts. So our office handles, is one of the main points of communication for educators within the state. We received 78,000 applications, or that's the average number of applications we've received or processed for certification, permits, licensure over the last three years. We have processed about 95% of those within two weeks. And we have an average phone wait time of 1 minute and 32 seconds, and that reflects about 32,000 calls received in 2019 and 2020, and about, we also responded to about 45,000 emails from our educators across the field. So we're pretty proud of those statistics and wanted to share those with the board to demonstrate our ongoing commitment to customer service for our education community. With the Proud Michigan Educator Campaign, which reflects our commitment to recognition, we have about, we have eight videos on YouTube that reflect our Proud Michigan educators, and there are about 8,000 views of those, and those highlight our Michigan Teachers of the Year, Regional Teachers of the Year, and other community members or other educators in the field. We have about 8,000 followers. We get about 60,000 engagements annually, so that's great. And we're always trying to improve our presence so we can communicate critical information to our educators. You are all familiar with our recognition programs. So these are the six programs that we sponsor or support or are partnered with out of the Michigan Department of Education. We're just about to reopen the nominations impact for Michigan Teacher of the Year and Regional Teachers of the Year for next year, which is how we got Leah Porter. In our 1920 Teacher of the Year program, we received about 441 nominations. That resulted in 124 applicants that moved forward, and they decided to apply based on their nomination. And we had 10 Regional Teachers of the Year and one Michigan Teacher of the Year. And there's the regions right there on the map that reflects the areas from which we draw our Regional Teachers of the Year. You have had the opportunity to see our Regional Teachers of the Year. You'll get to see them more throughout this upcoming year as they come to speak to you. But here's a little overview of each regional teacher and a description. Their bios are also on our website. And we're going to talk a little bit about recruitment. So this slide is about temporary credentials. You'll see that our use of temporary credentials is increasing. The green ones are our full year permits, authorizations, and approvals. The blue represent the daily permits and authorizations. So in 1920, we issued 51,576 temporary credentials to teachers. One of the reasons that number is increasing is our support of using the full year permits, authorizations, and approvals in Grow Your Own programs in schools. So they have good candidates that are working within the school district. They put them on the full year permit or approval process to grow them into teaching positions, and they're allowed to renew that multiple years while they work through a program. So we're, we're happy to see those numbers increase. The daily permits and authorization stayed pretty steady between 1819 and 1920. We would have expected to see more probably at the tail end of 1920 as we had people supporting virtual instruction at the end of that year. School administrators are in the corner. In 1819, we had 447 temporary administrator permits. 1920, we had 406. Those temporary permits also allow administrators to grow into a role. They may become employed within, and within six months, they must enroll in a program and complete that program within three years. And until that time, they can work on a temporary credential. Future Proud Michigan Educator Campaign. So this reflects individuals employed in PK 12 schools, as I mentioned before. They taught under a full year permit in the 2017-18 academic year and attained a certificate or an additional endorsement in either 1819 or 1920. So these are the results of some of our Grow Your Owns moving through certification. In 1819, we had 16 total, and in 1920, we had 35 total. So that's exciting. These are new programs that we're working with school districts to develop and support. So while the numbers are low, it is good to see them double in a year, and we expect to see more in 2021. Preparation. So we currently have eight active teacher leader preparation providers. We have eight teacher alternative route programs, three alternative school and alternative route programs. Directly next to that on the right, you'll see the breakdown of our traditional route programs. The largest number is 29 teacher programs that are traditional routes. In 1920, we had two new providers, one alternative route and one teacher leader program. And over time, we like to keep an eye on providers that have elected to close. So since 1516, we've had 10 providers that have elected to close. So enrollment status by pathway, these numbers are always interesting. I'm going to start at the bottom of the slide, which reflects 1819 enrollment data, and this does end up being a year behind because our enrollment data comes from a federal source, which is another year behind. So we do the most recent data. So in 1819, we had about 6,700 candidates enrolled in a traditional route programs. That's been steady the last two years. This is the third year it's been around 6,700, so it's good we're maintaining. We did have a little bit of an increase in our traditional route completers this year over the last three years, so that's good, with 2,300 completers. And we had a significant increase in alternative route enrollees this year with 1,000 versus 436 last year and 114 the year before. Satisfaction. So we're invested in customer service with our teacher candidates, just as we're invested in our customer service with our educators that are already in the workforce. We check with the teacher candidates, we check with their cooperating teachers, and we check with their candidate supervisors to determine how satisfied they are with their preparation in specific areas. And here's a highlight of some of those areas, not all of those areas. Professional awareness is new this year, which is why it's a standalone Greenbauer right there. We ask the teacher candidates, we are testing out the questions, and we'll move towards using it with the cooperating teachers and candidate supervisors in the future. We are also expanding it to ask school administrators how satisfied they are with their candidates that are newly entering the profession in their first three years to further gauge their preparedness when they're entering classrooms. So we're excited to see that. But overall, 91% of teacher candidates felt they had diverse clinical experience opportunities throughout their program, which is really important to us, both the diversity and both the throughout the program portion of that statement, and that the program elephants, elements positively contributed to their preparation. So that's good news. And we do break this down by institution and look at them more closely to determine if there are differences as part of our accountability metrics for our preparation programs. Michigan tests for teacher certification. Overall, we have a 90% MTTC passing rate. That's a rolling three-year rate, so if they pass at any time in a three-year period, we count it in here. That's, that statistic is required to be reported to the legislature, so that's one of the reasons we use that statistic. But overall, it's a 90% MTTC pass rate. Noting on this particular slide that we don't actually expect to have 100% MTTC pass rate, we have educators- rate, we have educators that were prepared elsewhere, that transfer in, that complete online programs in Michigan, for example, at like Grand Canyon University, and so they're using Grand Canyon standards and coming back to try and pass Michigan's tests, which don't always have tight alignment. So we do expect some discrepancy in pass rates on the examinations. Certification. So this talks about initial teaching certificates. The blue bars are teaching certificates. The orange bars are other certificates, and other are things like school administrators, school counselors, school social workers, so other types of certificates and licensure that we handle. 1516, we had 4,400 initial teaching certificates, and in 1920, we had 4,300 initial teaching certificates. So we did see a dip. We were excited to see a rise in 1819. We're excited to see another little bit of a rise in 1920. In the right-hand corner, it just talks about the total applications denied by MDE. We often get questions about reciprocity and how well licensure transfers from other states. Overall, we approve 94% of applications that we receive in-state and out-of-state total. 3% don't get approved because they're never paid for. 2% are generally sitting and waiting for document status. We need transcripts or documentation from a candidate, and only less than 1% are denied by Michigan Department of Education because they don't meet the requirements in some fashion. So that's good, too. We like that we have opportunities, pathways, and flexibilities for our applicants. In-state versus out-of-state teaching certification. I've talked about this a couple of times. Right now, 27% of our applicants in 1920 completed an out-of-state preparation program. That includes online programs, so individuals that live in Michigan and complete an out-of-state program somewhere else online. So that's a pretty significant number of out-of-state applicants. You can see by the blue bar, our teacher certifications are raising. Those are in-state applicants, and you've seen this kind of jump across the different types of comparisons. Below there is our out-of-state preparation numbers, and they've stayed really pretty steady. There's a slight increase, and now there's a little dip, but overall hovering right around 1,000 to 1,300. So this slide is always interesting. We currently have about 150,000 individuals with a current valid Michigan teaching certificate. When we break that down, about 84,000, 85,000 of them are currently employed in a teaching position. 64,000, 65,000 are not employed in a teaching position. 143 of that number, 3,000, have a valid certificate, and they're living in Michigan. 6,000 are not living in Michigan. So it's interesting ways to look at these numbers, and the reason that we do this is because we work on recruitment and encouraging educators to return to the workforce, and we reach out to these different populations in different ways, based on where they live, their age, the current validity of their certificate, how long it's been since they've been employed or unemployed. So it helps us understand the pool of our educators. Placement and growth. So this one's always interesting, and we get questions about these two numbers, and we used to put them separately. So I put them together on one slide this year so we could look at them together. On the left, it's the number of employed teachers. So that number hovers right around 87,000 to 88,000 over the last few years, which is pretty standard. So when people ask, "How many teachers do we employ?", you should hear the number around 88,000, 89,000, somewhere in there typically. There's also a number that you'll hear, which is the number 108,000, and that's the number of assignments for those teachers. So in that 108,000, they are counted more than once. For example, they may work in a, two school districts as part-time. So in that 108,000 number, they are counted twice. So if you hear the 88, 89 number, that's by body. If you hear the 108,000, it's by kind of assignment or job or position. That's the difference in those two numbers. Number of first-year teachers reported. So this one's really interesting, and there's a little bit of a nuance to this slide. So we looked at the number of first-year teachers by counting the first time that they showed up in rep assigned to a teaching role since 2003, 2004. So we went back about 15 years. We looked to see during that time that, to make sure that they were assigned for the first time in a 15-year period, and of those numbers, here's what we see. 1516, there were about 4,300 individuals in that role, assigned to a teaching assignment for the first time, and it slightly increased. 1819, we peaked at about 5,100 when we look at this five-year span, and we're hovering at about 4,900. So this kind of, if you think about the context of this, we used to hear like new teachers had a really hard time finding jobs, right? Field was pretty competitive, you could interview for lots of things, and they'll actually get a position. What we see is we are employing more new teachers for the first time, and it's likely because there is a shortage in teachers, and so they're reaching out to the younger population and new graduates for positions more frequently. And last, just a little fun tidbit about the professional learning opportunities that we offer in this state. So we have 650 or so sponsors that can provide professional learning opportunities for educators in the state. That professional learning falls into 18 different classifications. We kind of condense them down so we can look at the professional development being offered. But overall, we had 15,000 different offerings for educators last year, and those areas are broken out there. You can see there's a focus on social language arts, instructional strategies and management, grade level-specific content, special education, and technology and media. So this is really important to us because we want to make sure that educators can reach out and have access to a lot of different types and a lot of different professional learning opportunities to support the profession. So that is what I brought up for you today, but I do encourage you, the report is very dense. It answers a lot of questions. It's a good place to turn to if you have a question about our educator workforce data. And if you don't find it there, you're welcome to reach out to me using my content information so I can help you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Breen. Dense in the sense of rich.
Rich, yes.
Not in the sense of opaque or otherwise incomprehensible. Thank you very much.
I hope so.
It was a lot of material to cover in a short order. Questions from board members. Dr. Pritchett and then Ms. Lipton in the chat.
Thank you. The 90% overall MTTC passing rate, help me remember if we have a candidate who misses just part of that test, because I understand, you know, you can pass some parts and maybe not pass one or two other parts. Is there any possibility they can get a temporary cert and be placed in a classroom while they continue to work on the test?
So that's a great question. All of our tests currently are compensatory, so they have subcategories. So the elementary education test is a great example where it covers multiple areas. It'll cover math, it'll cover science, it'll cover social studies. If you don't do well in one area, you can compensate for that in another area as long as you get an overall total passing score that's above the cut. So when you go to retake it, you can't break it into subtests to retake it. It doesn't work that way. You have to retake the full test, and that is how it generally works for all of our tests. However, that is changing for elementary education. It is going to start being broken into subtests, and they will be able to retake the unique subtest on the new release of the examination coming up. So that is going to change. Currently, the educators may only get a temporary license. The only option we have for a temporary license in law is when they transfer from out-of-state. They can have a one-year temporary license if they need to take the test. They don't even always need to take the test. If they have experience, they don't have to take the test. If they're inexperienced, they have to take our test, and they have a year to pass that test, and you give them a temporary license.
Okay. Another question. On your slide dealing with the 149,689 with current teaching certificates, the 64,000 that are not employed in a teaching position. I assume we can communicate with them, or at least their last known email or address.
Yeah.
Is that part of the outreach that we were doing, or the department has been doing, for those individuals to try to hook up or connect districts who are understaffed at this point with individuals who have their certification and for whatever reason are not, you know, using it right now?
That's a great question. So we recently launched the Welcome Back Proud Michigan Educator Campaign. You've probably all seen it, and that campaign focused on individuals that had lapsed their certification to help them get recertified and return to the classroom, of which we've had over 100 successful returns to the classroom, which is excellent news. This 64,000 group of people includes people like me, so I still hold a valid certificate. I'm not in a classroom, but I'm still in the field of education, and I do keep my contact information updated in the communication systems that we use. So yes, in general, we can communicate with these folks because they make sure their information is updated every five years when they renew their certificate. If they move during that time, if their email address changes during that time, we lose our ability to communicate with them easily, although we do still have other methods that we try. And we definitely have been working. We have done things like survey these individuals and ask them why they're not inflating classrooms. We've asked them what it would take to get them to return to classrooms, to try and figure out if we could make policy recommendations or decisions in support of their return. Funding and money, salary is a lot of it. Many of them have moved on and since their classroom positions are in roles where they make more money financially, either in the field of education or outside the field of education. But we definitely do work with them and try and communicate and encourage them to come back.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lipton.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Could you just, I want to make sure I understand the difference between the daily permits and the full-year permits. Are the daily permits, are those permits for substitute teachers, that you're only getting it for a day? Or maybe, I just need some explanation on what that is, and is there a difference in the application process to secure and process a daily permit versus a full-year permit?
Yes, absolutely. So the daily substitute teaching permit is intended to be used for a teacher who is out for on sick leave for the day, or has a personal leave for the day, or perhaps at this point in juncture had to leave the classroom temporarily due to COVID, for example. Those would be great places to use a daily substitute permit. That's why they're called dailies, because they're intended to be used kind of on a day-to-day basis.
Okay.
Those permits are only valid for 90 days in a single placement. So if you had somebody that really went on a family unexpectedly, that person could remain in that classroom until the individual returned, so it would be least disruptive to students. We hope that those peoples, they're only required by law to have 60 credit hours. We hope that they are supported by districts and have additional training if they are going to stay in those assignments kind of longer term up to that 90-day period. The full-year permits, and so again, that only requires 60 credit hours and is a very simple application process. It can be granted immediately as long as they pass the criminal background review. The full-year permits are more intensive because they're designed for things like our Grow Your Own programs, where we want that person to be able to maintain their placement in that position over multiple years and grow into being a teacher. So they require things like either a major in a content area, so you were a math major, and then you're coming in on the permit and the district's supporting your transition into becoming a math teacher, or demonstrating that content knowledge by passing the Michigan Test for Teacher Certification, so that they can stay in that, so they demonstrate they have the content knowledge, and then they're working on the pedagogy with their mentor in the school district or while they're preparing or finishing their program.
Ms. Lipton, any other questions?
Yes, I do, thank you. The other thing I've noticed in a number of the data points, it shows that there was a big change around 2015, and it looks like drops, whether it be in the number of teachers in the state or what have you. And I was wondering if there was something that happened at that time to cause the, you know, the rather, at least on the charts, a rather marked drop.
Yeah, I think there were a few things that happened around that time. So one of the things that happened is we made some changes to the cut score for the basic skills examination and the professional readiness examination, and our group of stakeholders recommended a cut score that was more stringent than it had been previously. And so in doing so, we lost some educators who were trying to, and the professional readiness exam at that time is used before you enter a program, not before you finish your program like the MTTC. So we had a drop in educators that entering the program because that gate was there and they couldn't make it through the gate to get enrolled in the program. So that was one of our more precipitous drops around that period of time.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. And then lastly, in the aggregate numbers for teachers being counted, are charter school teachers and private school teachers in that? Because my recollection is that those populations of teachers don't need certifications, but maybe I'm wrong on that.
Great question. So charter schools are public schools and have to require, follow all the requirements, including certification or permit. Private schools actually by law are also required to follow the certification laws. However, there isn't a penalty for, or state aid deduction like there is for traditional public schools if they choose not to follow the requirement. These numbers, though, do reflect anybody who has a valid teaching certificate, whether they are in a non-public or a public school on this slide right here.
Okay, and then the deduction in state aid, that wouldn't, that wouldn't affect a private school, right? Because they're not getting state aid?
Correct.
But it would affect, so a charter school that uses an uncertified teacher still can use an uncertified teacher, they just get a deduction in state aid?
Anybody can use a certified teacher, but yes, they get a deduction up to that amount of that teacher's salary potentially, 50 or 100%, and they also could possibly get a second deduction because of people membership amount. So it's pretty significant if a school district chooses not to do that.
Okay.
And just a clarification, an uncertified teacher?
Uncertified teacher or unpermitted. So we have the permits in circumstances where if somebody lapses unexpectedly, they could get that daily permit to help bridge that gap. That's another great reason for those permits.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Dr. Olbridge, do you have a question?
I do not.
Okay. Mr. Schaehorn, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. You had, there was a slide that talked about like 10 of the training providers that decided to close. Do you have any background on it? Why did they close?
I do. So that is the compilation, this is the slide right here. It's both alternative and traditional routes. There are a variety of reasons. Some are related to, some of our new alternative route providers couldn't sustain their programs over, within the first five years and then closed due to financial models, lack of enrollment, unanticipated business opening situations. Some of our traditional routes lost enrollment, so one of these notably would be Michigan Tech up in the UP, which was a big loss for us because, you know, we don't want to lose providers up in the UP, particularly Michigan Tech, which was some math and science. And as far as I understand it, that was due to lack of enrollment. We have others that, because we have accreditation requirements and accountability requirements for our providers in Michigan, felt they were unable to meet the expectations of the program quality that we expected and elected to close based on not meeting those requirements.
Okay, and then also I saw the alternative route. There's another slide where you had a big explosion, like from 314 to 1,100 almost.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Did I miss it again?
Yeah, you just passed it. Right there.
That one. Yes, so, you know, I am not sure. I know during that time, we started, we allowed educators to also gain additional endorsements through those programs. So if I was a certified Michigan educator and my school wanted me to teach, let's say I was certified in math and the school wanted me to teach biology or chemistry or physics, I could actually use an alternative route to test into an interim certificate and use that to teach for three years and then add the endorsement to my certificate. So that is likely some of that reflected in there, which is great. We want that opportunity for educators to be able to expand their endorsements easily. We've also had an increase of providers. We've had an increase in their outreach to, around the state to educators to get them interested in their programs. So those are probably likely causes there, but I could definitely look at that a little bit more if you had further interest.
Yeah, I would. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Mr. Schaehorn, you're good?
I'm good.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder?
I noticed a couple of things, just curious about. In the bars of service.
In the bars of service, I think under meeting student needs cooperating teachers were at 87%. I'm just curious, how do you measure that? Is that sort of like a goal area for you guys? Because when I think about meeting student needs, of course, all those voices are important, but the cooperating teacher is the one that has that, you know, years of experience in assessing such a thing.
Yeah. So we actually like to see it when the cooperating teacher scores are lower because we want them to be authentic in their evaluations of new candidates. And I would say this is the first time we've seen some real differences in, in those measures. So I know that that cooperating, or I'm sorry, that meeting students' needs question encompasses several areas. And let me just see if I jotted those down, because I think we anticipated that question. But if I did not bring them, I can definitely get them to you and I can tell you what specifically it targeted. Nope, I did professional overall readiness and professional awareness, but not that one. So I will go back to you on the meeting students' needs.
The second thing is the 3% that need payment?
Yeah.
Okay, so, you know, we could attribute that to a number of things, but are we, are we making sure that it may be someone that would need help? Are you reaching out to them? And I don't know, I'm just curious. 3% is a large enough number that I think is worth following up on, especially since we need educators.
We do, and I can give you an example of kind of, of one of the things that we hear. So they have to submit that application. And then it tells them, here are the documents you're going to need in support of your application. Submit your documents, pay for it, and then it goes through the evaluation process. We want to make sure they have everything that they need. Often, I think what they find is they don't have the right supporting documents in order to support the application that they've applied for. And so they don't proceed with the application. But we do try and go through and take a look at those and make contact with them. We have automatic reminders in the system, you still need payment, you still need payment, your application's not being processed. But we have reached out in the past to say, do you need help with that? Is there anything that we can do? And they do fall off over time.
Supporting documents are proof of credits, proof of training, and that. So, and do you have access to know that the proof of training is there regardless of the submission of the documents?
We, sometimes we can go look on other state sites and see evidence of a credential, but we can't see the type of training that they have. And in some cases, they have to meet specific requirements for the certificate that they've applied for. So a provisional versus a professional. And so we need a little bit more information from them. It's pretty rare we can typically approve it without getting additional documentation.
Okay.
Ms. Breen, could you put the enrollment status back, slide back up? So Ms. Lipton asked a question about this. And I don't want to, to lose a couple of things associated with this slide. She asked, why the decline from 1415 to 1516? And I think that there are a number of responses to that. The board may recall that in 2011, we cut the per pupil foundation allowance in the state by $470, $470 per child. And there were layoffs across the state in Michigan. And that affected the pipeline. And you can imagine that it wouldn't necessarily affect the pipeline if you are in your program, but it affects the pipeline as you consider going into the program. So if I'm a junior in the program in 2011, I continue. I'm a sophomore in the program, I continue. But if I'm reflecting upon going into this field in ensuing years, I'm less likely to go into that profession. The reduction in funding, the resultant layoffs, the publication of a series of reports, which would begin in 2015 and course up to the present day that show that we persistently underfund public schools in the state of Michigan. The Michigan State University study that noted that we were 50th of 50 in total revenue growth in the country from 1995 to 2015. All of these have a cumulative effect. Ms. Breen, you're aware through the research that, that you've sought out that you've partnered with from REL Midwest and others that, though not the only factor, funding is a significant factor of people's decision-making about whether to try to go through a program and subsequently enter the, the field. So that, that's important for people to understand. The other important thing to understand, as rich as this presentation is, it is a year dated. So it does not include particular things. For example, Dr. Pritchett asked about Welcome Back Proud Michigan Educator. That's a 2021 reform, a waiver process that we created in OEE/MDE. A terrific opportunity, not reported on initially. We answered the question, of course, but not reported on initially simply because this is really not about that year. It's not about that particular year so much. Similarly, there were two alternative route programs, if I recall correctly, that we approved in the last nine months. They're not represented, if I recall correctly, in this presentation. Is that right? Okay. So, so know, board, that there are some things that are, that were unreported on today that nonetheless are in the pipeline and that have begun to affect our local schools and local districts. So I just wanted to, to share that with you. We appreciate our presenters. I am going to pivot. It is 11:52 and I'm going to move us along because we have a lot of agenda, board, still to, still to address. Thank you, Dr. Chapman, and Ms. Breen.
Dr. Rice, I will have a question somewhere, somehow about, to your point and to some of the numbers that were there. I, I think it was the one, the, the 150,000 number. What year was that?
1920.
That was, okay. That was 19.
2019, 2020.
I, I, I got you. But, I mean, to.
Most of us were not in the room back in the day.
I understood you.
Okay, cool.
But I guess to, to your point is, because, once again, you know, if you're reading the headlines, you're looking at retirements and people leaving the field. So I just want to make sure that we're making that, that point as well. Because, you know, if we're putting out this report, those of us at this table understand that we're talking pre-COVID. But I'm just wondering if there's any data that's being collected, real-time data that, that tells us what, what's happening, but then also can tell us if the things that were the piece, those mitigation, or the responses that we're putting in place, if they're working. Because if you look at the headlines, it looks like we're going to be in a bad place.
There's a lot of data that's being collected. There's a study that's taking place. And what I can tell you is, is we'll be reporting out on this area periodically with the board and with the community as well. We continue to have a teacher shortage, in some cases exacerbated by the pandemic, in other cases not. I can tell you our support staff, our support staffs have shortages as well. And in many cases, those support staff shortages are more acute than our teacher shortages. In other cases, they are similarly acute. Districts across the state and in many cases across the country are looking for bus drivers. They're also looking for other types of staff members, care professionals, custodians, food service employees, aides, activity helpers, and the like. So I don't want anybody to understand in any way, shape, or form from the presentation that we are where we fully need to be in staffing up our schools. We are not. We continue to have challenges in that regard. We are enormously encouraged by the additional funding provided in good measure by the Fed, in significant measure as well by the state legislature, signed into law by the governor, which provides us with more funding than we've had in the state to address the needs of children. We are hopeful that that additional funding will, at least in the short run, help us address teacher shortages. But it took us a decade to get into this place. It's going to take us at least a decade to work out of it. Thank you very much. Next item on today's agenda is discussion on Michigan State Board of Education Board norms. This item was added to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. President Albridge will lead the discussion on board norms. Dr. Albridge. One sec.
Thank you. So several months ago, I proposed that we consider creating a set of board norms that would help to guide our work in a general sense, as well as allow new members to have a set of guideposts to help acclimate them to how the board works. And all members were invited to participate in calls discussing what they would like to see in a small group consisting of myself, Tiffany, and Pam, right? You were on that, right? Created the set of board norms. And so I'm bringing them forward for conversation today, not necess, I'm sorry, did I leave someone out?
Yeah.
Judy. Sorry. And Judy. Created these set of board norms. And so we're bringing them forward today for conversation and potentially in the future for board action. Would you like me to read these for the folks at home?
Please, yeah, I think that would be good.
All right. So the draft says the Michigan's State Board of Education members are dedicated to fostering an environment of mutual respect, which includes healthy dialogue meant to nurture and fortify thought-provoking conversations. To maintain this atmosphere at all times, board members commit to the following. Board members will be courteous to guests, presenters, staff, and each other. Board members will maintain civility when facing opposing views and will strive to value all opinions. Board members will speak one at a time only after they are called upon by the chair. Board members will allow adequate time for responses to be given by other board members, staff, and guests. Board members will focus on statewide educational issues and challenges. Board members will be prepared to start, be prepared, start on time, use time wisely, and end on time. Board members who want to propose additions to the agenda or resolutions or statements will submit fully written documents to the Chair, State Superintendent, President, and State Board Executive no later than 24 hours before the start of the meeting to allow documents to be shared with all board members to facilitate adequate preparation for meetings. Board member requests for information or assistance should be sent to the State Superintendent and/or State Board Executive, who will distribute the communication to staff for response. And finally, board members will make a reasonable effort to inform the President and State Superintendent regarding any issues that could be highlighted by media or that could be discussed at a public forum, including state board meetings. So there are no surprises.
Okay. So it's, it is up for discussion. That I'm cognizant of the fact that we're, we're bumping up against lunch. I'm also cognizant of the fact that we have quite a substantial afternoon. Let's see what justice we can do to the discussion between now and 12:30, board. And this is not a voting item, important to understand. It is a discussion item for the moment. So, Dr. Pritchett, would you like to share additionally?
I can. I guess my motivation for serving on the subcommittee is that I have the unique experience probably of having either observed or been on this board as long as Dr. Albridge, because I used to sit over here on the sidelines in what I affectionately referred to as the peanut gallery for nine years prior to being elected to the board. And so I've seen quite a few issues come and go around the board table. And there have been times when I have sat back and went, we should not be, or they should not be, when I was sitting over here and it was easier to throw the, the comments, to myself anyways. They should not be, or we should not be speaking to a presenter in that tone. The presenter comes to give us information, take it. You don't have to agree with it. That's fine. Voice your disagreement, indicate why you have that disagreement, and move on. That has become a little more challenging these last several months. And so that was one of the things that really spurred me on to say, I would like to be part of this committee to make sure that, no matter how passionate we get, and I'm passionate about certain issues too, that we take a step back and remember that this again is a guest who's bringing us information, just like a guest would come into our home or anything like that. So that probably was my primary motivation. I'm going to show my age here, but I'm probably the oldest person in the room. And so I do remember back in the 50s when polio was running rampant and that every time either my brother or I spiked even a little temperature, my mother in particular, was convinced it was polio and would call the doctor. I don't remember what we, steps she would take at that point. And when the vaccine became available, the family made the decision that my brother and I would receive the vaccine. I tried to live by those rules that my parents set forth. As we look at the pros, we look at the cons, and we made a decision to move forward. I don't remember, and I will admit that I wasn't real old during the 50s, this much controversy. So I did a little bit of checking and come to find out there wasn't as much controversy with the polio vaccine, partly because it was, my understanding, being supported by the March of Dimes. And people had a certain level of comfort knowing that and therefore accepted it probably a little bit easier. And the fact that polio specifically, though it could affect adults, affected children very much so. So I try to keep that in my mind as we have these discussions, but I will be real frank with everyone in the fact that I am deeply concerned in the way in which we have been talking to each other and with each other. I know there's strong feelings. I, again, have my own personal feelings. I've had many mentors over the years and I try to look at both sides. And I have looked at the science on both sides of this issue. And again, as a family, we've made our decisions. And school districts and health departments and government officials have had to make those decisions also. And I appreciate the information that comes to the board. And you need to know that I appreciate each one of you and your election to this Board of Education and the constituency that you represent. And you do need to bring those viewpoints to the board. But we have to stop attacking each other. It just reminds me almost of middle school. And God love middle school kids. But we then, to the public, are perceived as just bickering. And we could do so much good. We could be the role models. I feel for local boards of education right now in Michigan and throughout the country. People are being threatened because they are voting in a particular way. They were, they've looked at the evidence, they've looked at whatever science they're going to look at, and they're voting in a particular way and they're being threatened and shouted down in meetings? That's not necessary. That's not how we should be acting as adults and certainly not as role models for our children or the children and youth of this country. These are tough times. This deals with health. We've talked about this at this board table forever, that the health and social well-being of a child comes first because if it isn't there, they can't learn. So we're the State Board of Education. We have got to step forward and try to the best that we can. And sometimes you got to count to five to put it behind us. The innuendos, the comments, personal, have to stop. You want to bring your science forward, you want to bring your websites forward, you want to say according to this, according to that. Fine, go ahead. You have time to do that. But to infer that somebody doesn't have the right side of that, to infer that they're wrong because they happen to believe that at that point, isn't going to get us anywhere because we're not changing any minds at this table. I can tell you that right now. I can tell you that right now. I've seen that sat here. I've watched legislative sessions. We're not going to change any minds. We do have a right, we do have a responsibility to bring those views forward, but that's it. Then we have to, if there's votes to be made on resolutions, on board norms, on whatever we have to make votes on, then we have to make those votes based on the information that we have and where we are at that point in conversation. So that's why I chose to be on this subcommittee. And I believe these are just almost, I hate to use the term no brainers, but these are just things we should be doing as adults, as human beings. I would expect nothing less if I was still in the classroom. I'm looking at Leah right now. These almost look like the norms that we set up at the beginning of the year in all of our classrooms. We're going to treat each other like this, and this, and this. And I taught high school, so we knew we were going to have some differences of opinion. And we laid some ground rules on how we were going to handle that. And I think that's where this board is at, at this point. So that's why I chose to be on the subcommittee, and that's all I've got right now.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Lipton?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to thank the members of the committee. I want to thank President Albrecht for bringing this before the body, and also to thank you to the drafters for capturing, at least I participated in a robust small group discussion, and I assume that the other members of this body equally participated. And so I just want to thank the drafters for putting their time into this and also capturing the essence of the small group meetings and bringing this document in front of us to review. I have just a couple of thoughts. Several years ago, I participated as an attorney in a State Board of Michigan, sort of a similar sort of review of civility in the profession. A number of judges and attorneys had sort of brought about the fact that things were getting really sort of out of hand, and so the state bar undertook this sort of document review for civility in the profession. And so one of the things that we discussed was that you can disagree without being disagreeable. That was sort of the mantra, because, you know, attorneys don't have the best reputation amongst the population. And so we were really working hard on that. And so that was something that I feel was very, very important, this concept of robust disagreement without being disagreeable. The second thing that we considered, and I'm not by any stretch of the imagination suggesting that we didn't consider this or that we should or shouldn't consider it, I'm just sort of throwing it out there. One of the things that we thought about were consequences for failure to adhere to a group of norms. And so, again, I'm not suggesting that it's something that you did or didn't consider, but it may be something that we may want to think about or think about in the future in terms of how we might sort of ensure that we not just put forth these norms, but that collectively that we adhere to it. So that's something I'm sort of throwing out there for reflection. And then lastly, I would like to perhaps suggest the addition of the refraining of physical gestures. Again, that's something that we considered amongst, you know, amongst attorneys. Oftentimes, you know, the concept that with physical gestures, you can sometimes cause a feeling of dominance or of threats or what have you. And so it may be something that we want to consider in terms of adding to the norms. Again, just being conscious that certain physical gestures can appear threatening, and perhaps that may not be something that we want to, that we want to, you know, to put forth. So those are just some food for thought.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Ms. Tilly?
Yes, I really appreciate being a part of this process. I think this, this could be really good for the board. Judy just made me think of something when she was speaking, when she was saying about it's basically how we should be, how the board should be, how it should act, or how we should act. And it reminded me of Beatitudes in the Bible, when Jesus gave the Sermon on the Mount, when he was saying, "Be like this, be like that." This is kind of, this can be kind of our Bible. And it's nine Beatitudes. Right now, it's nine bullet points on this document. And it sets a tone. Hopefully, going forward, we can all respect each other better, because at the end of the day, it's not about us, it's about the children. We are here to help catapult education in Michigan and make it better for our children. So that's the big focus, and we can't do that if we cannot even get along as a board. So I hope that this can go forward soon, honestly. And for me, it could be a standalone document, but I also think that it could be, it could have more teeth if it's actually in the bylaws. This could be a guide for people going forward on the board, even after we're not there, and if they need to change the bylaws, or they want to change some of the, some of the bullet points, they can. But that's my viewpoint about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. As far as courteous to presenters, I think I might have been part of the impetus when we were dealing with Cal Doone and Paulson a few months ago. But I'll say that in 2017 and early, if Natasha Baker, the SRO for, School Reform Officer for Governor Snyder, had come before us, and Pam Pugh, and Cassandra, and even Ellen and I, we were meeting to try to fight what she was trying to do, if she came before us and was claiming that everything was fine, and that these school closings in Detroit and other suburb, urban areas were fine and was helpful, I probably would have been pointed at that point and said, you know, "This is going to harm children," and maybe even have gone as far as say, you know, "I hope you'll be held accountable for this," or at least Snyder would be held accountable for it. I know others are trying to hold him accountable for the Flint water crisis, and others held accountable. So in politics, there can be some very pointed language that can occur, you know, while still being respectful. I guess you can always say, with all due respect, ahead of such a moment. So, yeah, I mean, I think that it just kind of depends. I, you know, I'm known as somebody, when I was in the legislature, of not allowing people who are presenting or claims of being able to obfuscate. Mr. Paulson, when I was trying to push him to, you know, his document that the governor endorsed, said that, you know, "There is a system of white supremacy." And so I was trying to push him to understand where he, why he would include that, and he was obfuscating, and clearly didn't want to address it. I think they've actually removed it now. Maybe I had a part of that, but it seems, I looked at the document, and I think that might have been removed, but, though it's still part of CRT, as we all know. But, you know, I would, yeah, I don't like, presenters who are making claims sometimes obfuscate. So I certainly didn't have a problem with that, and Cal Doone, you know, wouldn't acknowledge what the CDC said, so they acknowledge some things, not others. Yeah, I mean, I think that being direct sometimes can be a little uncomfortable, but when people come before us and if they're not giving truth, or we feel that it's not the whole truth, and we want to push back and try to get all of it out, I think that it's, can be uncomfortable. It doesn't mean it's being uncivil or uncourteous. They could have not come before us. There's plenty of people who are called before legislative bodies who choose not to come before them, so, you know, to avoid certain instances and confrontations that may occur. But when we're talking about dealing with policies that could be very impactful, I think it's, you know, it doesn't mean you're uncivil or uncourteous. It could be that you're just trying to get to the heart of the matter. I do agree that attacking individuals here on the board, I only know of one that's actually been doing that, and she did it again today, but I definitely think that's not a good thing, and would, I'm glad that we're talking about that as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Strickhorne and Ms. Snyder?
Okay. So, you know, I really do appreciate this, you know, Cassandra, you know, bringing this for, you know, myself as a new member of the board, and Ellen. I really like the comments that I've heard so far from everyone. And I think, you know, in my experience as a former athlete and understanding like teamwork, like this, I look at this board as a team that represents, you know, as Tiffany said, the children of this state. And, you know, they're watching, you know? The people of this state are watching our behavior and how we conduct ourselves, you know? And to play the game that I played in football, right? You're in the trenches, the front line, which I played. You have to play that game on the verge of a rage. You have to, in order to play successfully. And passion, emotion, that's good, but remember, the verge of a rage. You cannot play the game outside of the confines of the rules. You can't go out of bounds. You cannot go beyond what's allowed. This is what I look at, this is a framework, is rules. That's what board norms are. It's common courtesy, common decency, the golden rules, those things have all been thrown around. And I, once you do that, once you go beyond, then you hurt the team. What's our goal? Our goal is to be successful. Our goal is to win. What is winning? And that's for everyone to voice the opinions of your constituents, what you believe in, but do it within the confines of the rules and the structure that we have here. So I understand, you know, teamwork. I understand the passion. I love it, I do. I don't want anybody to change in that. But we've got to tone back the attacks, the language. I've never seen a team that could operate in that capacity and win a thing. You can't win like that. You can't. You can't move the ball forward. You cannot represent the state and these children that need our leadership acting and behaving like that. So, again, I do appreciate this, this guideline. I do love everyone's leadership capacity, aptitude, depth, and passion, but we need to do it within the confines of the rules, and I love this, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Ms. Snyder?
So I do like much of the board norms. There's a few that I've emailed everybody about, some comments on them, which we probably have more time at another, at another date to go more in-depth about those things. But it would appear that everybody's really focused on civility, which I think that's important. You know, I was raised to not take offense easily and to turn the other cheek, but after last month, and I'm not going to ugly cry again, I feel like I've turned the cheek so many times, I'm just getting slapped across the face, and there are no more cheeks to turn. And I think that extends, you know, the character attacks and the motive attacks that not just myself have experienced, extends, like we've talked about, to local school districts, to our kids, to the ability to be heard and respected, to the ability to set the example for what it looks like to respect one another, to debate in a healthy way, and to come to terms with just that, the beauty and the brokenness in the balance of the majority and the minority does not exist at this table. And so, you know, I think, I think after last month, I just felt like, okay, that's enough. I can't not take offense anymore. I'm not going to do that. And so I do, I feel like I need to inform my teammates. I'm done. I'm not going to take it anymore. And there are rules and consequences, Ellen, to your point, that we do abide by regardless of the board norms. Robert's Rules talks about disorderly words. Our bylaws talk about yes, don't name them, but disorderly words are disorderly words. In Robert's Rules, it doesn't differentiate when I say "you" are, again, I'm not trying to cause more issues, so I'm not going to repeat the words "you" versus "it is." None of that matters when we're using disorderly words that break down the debate to the extent that it's killed and we can't discuss it. So, you know, I'm going to take the liberty of carrying out the rules that we operate under and call members to order. It is important that we do that. And as a chairman, as other members of the body, also something I wrote in the email that I sent you guys about these norms that we'll, again, have hopefully more discussion about, it's all of our responsibility to take each other to account on those things, not just the person that took offense. And to be completely honest, you know, if you take offense to something I say, you need to tell me. I need to have the opportunity to say, "I did not mean that. Can I clarify that? I am sorry." We don't, we don't get to define, you know, your, I don't define, Jason, I'm only speaking to you as an example here, your offense. If you take offense to it, and we are on a team, and we have good, healthy relationships, you share that with me, I tell you, "Sorry. I do not want to cause that issue." But what we have is this pattern where it seems to be acceptable to show up and behave this way. And I, all I can say is, I'm not going to turn the other cheek anymore. It's not something, because I know how urgent it is for all the reasons that we've already discussed. So I think the board norms, there are many of them that are healthy, they're good. I think they're already, like you said, something we should be doing. There's something that are in classrooms, in families, in healthy relationships. They're in Robert's Rules. This is sort of a reminder, if you will. But, but I do, I feel strongly about the things that I've said here about this particular topic. And I need, I personally, as a teammate, need more people on board to say that, "No, no, hold on. Step back." Because I can't turn the other cheek anymore.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Any other board members before we break for lunch? Dr. Albrecht?
So I just want to say, I appreciate that everyone is willing to take a look at this, and I do think that we should, the conversation needs to include how we want to incorporate this, whether it's a standalone document, whether it's in our bylaws. But it does sound like we have a lot of support for this, which I appreciate. Ultimately, my goal here is that we, I've been on this board for 14 and a half years, and I can tell you, it's never been like this before. We were always known as the nonpartisan, essentially, board, the partisan, nonpartisan board, because we worked together on many different issues. And I think the pandemic has caused a lot of fraction, just in general, in the country, in the state, everywhere. And it certainly has caused that here, but that can't be our focus. And, you know, I feel like sometimes we come to this board table and we sit down and we're ready to do battle. And we don't have to be ready to do battle. I think that, you know, and I think there's, a lot of times, we're looking for something to be offended by. You know, we're looking for a comment that we can then turn around and say, "No, no, no, you didn't use the right word. How dare you use that word." People need to be able to express themselves without being attacked because they chose a word that you wouldn't have chosen. And I think that happens a lot, unfortunately. And I'll just say, my personal golden rule, and I try to live by this all the time, is never to assign motivations. I can completely disagree with you, but I don't assign a motivation to why you think the way you do. And I would ask that people do the same thing for me. And I would ask that people do the same thing for me. You know, if we just, if we just did that, I think that we would be taking a huge step forward. But I really do want to get back to where this board used to be. And, and part of that is, and I know some of you had some issues with having to go through the executive or the chair, but that's, that's the procedure. So it comes down to, do you want to be a problem identifier, or do you want to be a problem solver? Because if you just want to identify problems, then you just share that with whoever you want, and that's fine. But if you want to solve a problem, then you go through the process and the procedure to do that, and it's going to happen much, much quicker. At the end of the day, and this is something maybe we want to include in here as well, I'm not sure, but it's a reminder that this board does not run the day-to-day operations of this department. That is not our job, it's not our responsibility. And that also means that, you know, I don't have a right to go directly to an employee of the department and demand they do something. They don't report to me, they don't answer to me. There's only one person, maybe two, in this whole department that I have any authority over whatsoever. And so if I want to get something done, these are the two people I need to be willing to communicate with, and they need to be willing to communicate with me. And so I think that everything that's in this document is meant to help us do our job better, and if we want to be better at what we're doing, then these are the types of things that we need to focus on, and, or not focus on, but at least call out, that this is the way we should be operating. So I appreciate everybody's input, thank you.
Thank you, President Albrecht. Ms. Lipton, 60 seconds for a question, we will be breaking at 12:30 for lunch.
Yes, I had a question regarding, Board Member Snyder mentioned Robert's Rules of Order, and I just wanted to clarify, are we operating, is that in our bylaws that we must operate under Robert's Rules of Order? I wasn't aware of that, so I'm just trying to clarify that.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I wanted to make sure, the last three bullet points, I'm, you know, I'm not exactly supportive of necessarily, I'd like to know more about it, but we can talk about that another time.
Fair enough, okay, thank you. Board, it's 12:28, we are going to break for an abbreviated lunch until 1:15, back here for public comment at 1:15. Thank you.